Reminder folks, we have video and audio. Colin, anybody else? Mr. Carroll, Mr. Burrow? Thank you very much. Let's get the minutes done here.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's Minutes from October 16th, 2018.
The answer was put in discussion right now.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it for minutes. Correspondents? As a final reminder, tomorrow, townwide trick or treat will take place from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. at the West Warren Firemen's Association Annual Parade and Costume Contest immediately following. Lineup of the parade will begin at 6:30 p.m. at the corner of North and Main Streets with procession to conclude at Station B located on Albany Street. Also reminded that the Warren Water District will be holding a meeting on November 1st at Quabog Middle High School Auditorium for a presentation on a water filtration system, alternative findings, and a vote to install the system. They are asking that all Water District customers attend this very important meeting as their vote does count. That is it for correspondence.
And just to remind the folks, this is, uh... addressed the brown water issue, and there is going to be a vote taken that night, so... Mr. Nation, just adhere to that this is an important thing for the people that are looking to get some resolution in that situation, and there will be a vote from what I understand taken. So it's in everybody's behalf that if you run that water system, get involved and go to the meeting and find out what's going on. Okay, number five. We had a brief discussion. We had a resident from River Street come in last week requesting because of the snowplowing situation and the congestion on River Street that the residents requested it be turned into a one-way street. We had checked with Mr. Skierakowski from the Police Department, Adam McBoy from Fire, and Tom from Highway. They don't seem to have an issue with it, so they have suggested, the email replies have been fulfills, that the one-way be from across the post office is the entrance and the exit will be across from the senior center. From what I understand, didn't Tom say he was going to put down a little flashing board just so people get used to the fact that, uh...
You can make a sign too.
It is no longer two-way, that it is just on behalf of the residents that it leaves a lot of congestion, especially in the mid to months. So do we need a vote on that, though? I need a motion to consider one-way traffic only on River Street as recommended by the three department heads.
Second?
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done deal, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to appoint an election officer. I have a motion.
I move to appoint Denise Messier to be election officer of Inspector until December 31st.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go first, Corning Ambulance payments. Vote respect.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the first order ambulance abatement in a total of $132,771.48 presented by Chief McBoy.
Second? Hi. Just FYI, folks, this is for the months of July, August, and September. That's why the total is high. Let's go to Treasury, want us?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the warrant number 33 for payroll for $38,807.53, dated 10/22, and vendor warrant number 34 for $299,710.32 for the same date.
Second? Any discussion right now, all in favor?
Aye.
I also make a motion to accept warrant number 35 for the amount of $36,851.11 for payroll, and warrant number 36 for $104,004, dated 10/29, 2018.
Second? Any discussion right now, all in favor?
Aye.
Drawdowns and other invoices. Fiscal year 17, invoice number 23, CDBG drawdown grant number 813 for PVPC in amount of $33,582.50. And for fiscal year 17, invoice number 10, Community Assistance Program Grant number 813, PVPC as well, for $8,212.66.
Second? Any discussion right now, all in favor?
Aye.
I have a 7:15. Let's start the discussion regarding solar bylaw amendments. We've had a number of people come into the office with serious concerns about the, not only the placement, but the amount of solar developers coming into the town, and they have asked the Board to put this on the agenda to get the discussion regarding having something put on a town meeting for a moratorium. And with that, do we have anybody here that came into the office with those concerns? Go ahead.
Yes, well, my... My partner is com... We were told that we were, like, going to be on board at, like, around 7:30.
Yeah, I know there's... See, I have a public meeting at 7:15, so either you have to sit here and do nothing or I have to keep going on, so... I will warn you that at 7:15, I do have to stop because I just posted for that, and if the discussion isn't finished, we will come back to that.
Okay.
But you go ahead with your concerns.
All right. Well, eight weeks ago, I had no concerns because I didn't know what was going on in town. I was in my own little cocoon up on Brag Road, and all of a sudden, I got a certified letter that said that we were abutters to a large parcel of land, and immediately, we knew what that meant. So after three days of hysteria, not realizing that we too were vulnerable, just like anybody else, because of the open space around us, I launched into, with my neighbor, a lot of research about solar farms and their... They're in town. She is right now. Can I defer to you now that she's here, or do you want me to continue?
You can.
Continue? Okay.
Whatever you want, whatever you're most comfortable with. We get to start a discussion because I know that certain people have certain concerns.
Well, so I didn't... And that's on me. I didn't realize that we had more than one solar farm in town, and it turns out, we have eight functionally ones and one that is about to start. And the more that I learned, the more distressed that I became, and I really feel at this point that we are on the precipice of a crisis in town concerning solar farms. I think we're standing on the edge of a cliff, and we're waiting to see, hopefully that we don't fall over, but we're waiting for somebody to do something to save us. We're waiting for the state. We're waiting for the solar companies to move on and forget us, and that is not going to happen. It's not going to happen. It's a reality. We have all this open space in this beautiful little town, and these rural solar farms are chopping it up, one farm at a time. Last night, I was at the planning board meeting, and the room was filled with residents from Little Rest Road. And I have to tell you that this is their... They are looking at a fourth, fourth solar farm in their neighborhood. They've already gone through three builds. They've already suffered through the noise, the trucks up and down the road, not being able to walk, not being able to have their children ride their bikes, not being able to walk their dogs, the noise from morning till night until they're done, the trees being chopped down, the wildlife being removed because of that, concerns about health, concerns about their property. Last night, there was a gentleman who was talking about somebody's leach field right now that is so flooded that it's going to have to be replaced. Now, do you think the solar engineers are concerned about that? Are they going to compensate that person for that? I don't think so. So meanwhile, we have this happening. So we have Little Rest Road. I saw those people losing hope. They're looking for help. So here we are, we're on this cliff. We can either jump over and hope that we're not too broken when we hit the ground, or we can go for a temporary moratorium, take a step back, start inching our way down that cliff, put stronger bylaws in place that are going to protect us, perhaps put a cap, and this is what other towns are doing, put a cap on the number of solar farms in rural areas so that we can save the essence of this little town. We live here because of the beauty. We drive through it all the time, and maybe we don't realize how beautiful it is, but when someone comes into town that hasn't been here before and say, "Wow, what a great little place, what a beautiful little town," well, we are taking this little town, and we are losing the essence, one solar farm at a time. People are concerned about their health, they're concerned about their property values, they're concerned about the quality of their life. We don't have to look at four possible solar farms right now, but I'll tell you what, Little Rest Road is not going to be the only neighborhood that is going to be a casualty. Coy Hill is probably next. There's a project that's ready to start on Cronin Road, and there's one across the street that has gotten through Conservation for the Access Road, but has not... But the land itself is in Brookfield and West Brookfield. Doesn't matter. All summer long, we had logging trucks on our road, raking down the road. We couldn't walk, we couldn't ride, certainly a horse. It was... And it was for us, and we heard the noise all day long or saw us. So we need to do something, and people in town care. They are looking to you for guidance. They are looking to you for help. You have the ability to help us. And I'll tell you what, if you're worried about people showing up to a meeting, I can guarantee you that they will, because I believe that there is enough heart in this town, enough concern for what's happening here. If you call that meeting, they will come.
Just for your information, I have a public hearing that I have scheduled for 7:15.
Not a problem, I think.
So I let her start because either that or dead here.
I think she said everything perfectly, and all that we were asking is if we could have a special town meeting for being able to call...
Well, before I go into the public hearing, let me... What was the planning board position on this last night? Did they make a position?
I'll tell you what, the planning board has been so overrun, as has the Conservation Committee, because we've been to the meetings, as we've been trying to educate ourselves so that when we spoke about this, we did not sound like idiots. And they really want to do something. They said that they were going to study, because we asked for their blessing for this last night. We did not expect that they were going to just be slapped with this and then suddenly say, "Oh, yeah, let's do it." They wanted to look at the petition, they wanted to take a look at the ramifications of that, and they were not aware of how many towns around us have already done the same thing. We have North Brookfield, they've already got approval back from the state for their plan, and they have a cap on their solar farms.
Okay, I'm going to stop you right there, because I have to adhere to the law. Brett, sorry you come in.
Yes?
We simply invited you here because we haven't had a lot of correspondence, and I know you had your hands full through the issue that you were addressing down the school, and basically, we invited you here to give us an update.
Okay.
So this is the easiest way for the majority of people in town to find out what's going on, because we do have the camera. So I'm going to turn it over to you, and what's going on with the situation down at the school?
So we're in... We're open, and things are much better than they were at the start of the school year. What I did do is there is a website with a daily update of everything that happened with the mold remediation. In a nutshell, excuse my back, what happened is towards the end of August, we found out that we had a mold issue in the school. I can tell you from my experience, every mold issue that I've had before was contained, that it was small. We thought the same thing at the high school. It originated in the family and consumer science classroom, but over time, we learned that it was a much bigger issue than we originally thought. The first company that came in and helped to remediate the problem, we are disputing their bill to us, ServiceMaster. We did bring in another company after the fact, and I have a spreadsheet of all the costs that I will hand out to you in a minute. Compass Restoration Services came out after that, and within a short amount of time, they cleaned up the whole building, and we were open for business. Since then, we've had the Department of Public Health. They've been out twice this past month. They were here on October 5th. I walked the entire school grounds with them. They issued a report. The report is on our website. Basically, we have a clean bill of health from the Department of Public Health. However, what they said is they'd like to come back and do some more intense testing. So they came back October 25th, and I should get the report for them sometime in November. So that's pretty much where we were and where we're at now. The costs, I'll go over in a minute, but for parents and for families that are concerned about how we're going to make up the days, that's something that we're still having a discussion on right now. There was a survey that was given out to...
How many days did we lose, Bert?
We lost nine days. So let me clarify that. The middle high school is nine days behind the elementary school. The elementary schools did not lose any time whatsoever. So where the middle high school is nine days behind. Some of the things that they're talking about, and this isn't put set in stone yet, I hope to have it set in stone by November 19th, that's the date of the next school committee meeting, but what we've talked about is there's a professional development day on January 2nd. That would be one day right there. There are... We have February and April vacation. We're talking about what we could potentially do there, and we're also discussing the Blizzard Bag concept. I don't know if you're familiar with Blizzard Bags, but in the Reader's Digest version of Blizzard Bags, what some districts are doing in lieu of snow days so that it counts is they call it a Blizzard Bag Day, and what happens is the teachers give assignments to the kids, the kids complete their assignments at home, bring them in the next day, and that counts towards a day at school. That is under local control right now. The Department of Education is working on creating specific criteria for Blizzard Bags, but it's not out yet. It's a simple vote of the school committee. This is something that we've been talking about as a school committee and as administration for about two years now, so this is bringing it to a header. So I think that concept, hopefully, will be presented to the school committee for their approval in November. Do you want to see the bottom line on the cost? Any questions?
What are we going to do about the potential of a future problem? I mean, there must have been some... I know we talked about the hot humid environment we had this summer, but that's not all accounted for the problems. What are we doing to mitigate future problems so we don't have this bite us again in the future?
So the hot humid environment was definitely the point that tipped... Put us over that tipping point, so to speak. So what are we doing to be proactive? One of the things that we're talking about for next summer is in the middle of the high school, there's not a lot of airflow there, getting some industrial-sized dehumidifiers to take some of the moisture out of there. I can tell you that when Compass and ServiceMaster were in, those big 50-gallon drum buckets were filled overnight with water from one dehumifier, a big dehumifier. What we're doing now is the building committee is discussing proactive approaches to make sure that it doesn't happen again, including the dehumidifiers. The district has also recently hired a facilities coordinator. The facilities coordinator actually started today. The facilities coordinator, along with this, is going to be looking at our buildings in general and coming up with recommendations on how we're going to basically plan better for the future, not only with mold and humidity, but with everything in general.
Just have one more comment. I was at a meeting the other night, and Phil and Dave from West Brookfield Board of Selectmen was there as well, and the board wanted to be here tonight, but they had some contract negotiations they had already scheduled, so they were not able to attend, but I just wanted to be... Let it be known that they would have liked to have been here, but they just couldn't schedule it, so...
So I've been in contact with the West Brookfield Board of Selectmen. I've been to several of their meetings, and they have this information that I'll give to you and you give to the public. I know Colin probably wants it. I sent the copy to Eileen Kennedy this afternoon, but let me explain this. So... It's double-sided for a reason. I've got pro... Few, I don't know if I've got enough for everybody, if you want to maybe look on and share with a neighbor. So...
So the blue line on the back page, that's what the vote so far is for?
Yes, so if you look at... If you look at the... If you look at the blue line and it says 184,480...
Yeah.
That's the side that I'm on first. The blue side says 184,480, and I'll go through it very quickly. The contracted services, you can see the itemized amount for each there. There is one invoice that we're waiting on, that's the ATC Industrial Hygienist. That amount, we haven't received the second bill. I anticipate that it's going to be less than the first bill, so I believe that will be less than $5,000, but we don't have that in yet. After the contracted services, you've got supplies and materials, then you've got salaries and wages. So the blue is the total estimate to date on the front page, which is different from the backside, and I will explain that in a second. The insurance company said that they would cover $75,000. They... We were in contact with them last week. They said that they are in the process of writing us that check. The total amount after the basic insurance is 109. However, Maya, our insurance company, has said that they would cover some extra expenses, which are highlighted in green. So if you deduct those extra expenses from the total amount, you're at a total amount of 103. In talking with West Brookfield Selectmen, one of the things that they were discussing is possibly a third, a third, a third, a third from Warren, a third from West Brookfield, and a third from the school district, but I guess we can debate that once we have the final numbers. On the reverse side, you'll notice that the total is higher. If you look at the second line under contracted services, you'll see ServiceMaster Cleaning Restoration, $71,443.72. And then you will see to the right of that, in italics, that the district is disputing this amount. That is potential litigation that I've been discussing with the insurance, with the school committee in executive session. I've been advised by legal counsel to basically say that that is the bill that they are... That they have billed us, that is the amount, but we are disputing that, and I guess that will be something that will be taken care of over time. And I'm not really at liberty to answer any specific questions about that.
No, we get that. So the total to date is 255,94?
Including ServiceMaster, yes.
Well, I'll tell you, you know, I... I don't want to get off track here, but the report that we have received the call from was, let's just say, less than flattering, and I think they addressed that the lack of maintenance.
Which report is that? Insurance.
Maya.
Yeah.
That the, basically, this could have been avoided with proper maintenance program. That's where the board has concerns, that, because I know at one time, they did have a facilities manager, or whatever you had to title that then, and that was cut some time ago.
So when I first came to the district in 2009, there was no facilities manager. In 2011 or '10, when the federal government came up with the JOBS bill, we created an energy efficient manager-type position. That position hinged upon that person saving their salary in the budget and showing that savings, and you're correct that that position was cut over time, and we haven't had one since. But when I first came to the district in 2009, there was not a facilities director. So I don't know the history prior to 2009, what happened there. I know there was a high turnover in administration, but I can find out.
I think it was one of those that whenever this budget cuts, that was one of the first thing that went. You cut the man that oversees the buildings and you cut the custodians.
I also say that I cut 30 other positions, including classroom teachers, but if you ask me today, where am I going to cut if I ever have to make budget cuts? Students first, classroom last. Students first, meaning students are the first priority, number one, and...
But I think that, you know, back to John's question is, you know, we don't want or can neither afford a repeat of this.
I totally agree.
So, and you know, it's just because of the school buildings are newer, and we've had renovations over the years, just like anything else, they have to be maintained.
No doubt.
You know, I look at, you know, I was on Capitol paying for a couple of years. I get $6 million worth of work that the schools need. I got a report from David at the last school committee meeting. All three schools have roof leaks, we have door issues, ground issues, we have... There's just so much that seems to have been let go over the last few years for whatever, whether it went to... that seems to have been let go over the last few years for whatever, whether it went to staffing and budgets and students.
Yeah.
But the buildings just cannot be let go because you see, you know, the end result. Like I say, I have six million dollars worth of capital improvements, just from the school.
Yeah. So I would also say that Warren Elementary just did a building indoors project. That project was funded by the state to the tune of seventy-one point one seven percent.
Yeah.
Cost over a million dollars. The cost to the town of Warren was just over two hundred thousand dollars. So I would argue in some ways that, you know, we're doing everything possible to save both towns money. I found out today that Westbrookfield Elementary is going to have a similar renovation to what Warren Elementary had. And their reimbursement rate is going to be seventy-one point, seventy-four percent, seventy-four point six percent reimbursement. So I think the town of Westbrookfield should be very happy there. I would invite the public to come to Warren Elementary to see the condition of that building because in my opinion, since I've been here, I would argue that that building is probably in as good a shape as it's ever been with all brand new windows and doors and...
Except the gym floor.
Just looks good. Except for the gym floor, which is another thing that we can talk about next if you're ready.
Yeah, because you know, that was one of those things that I heard, you know, talk about this over two years ago.
Yeah.
And obviously, nothing's been done. Things don't get cheaper as time progresses.
Totally agree, and that's why it's been on the Capitol Plan for the past several lists. One of the things that, I think it was Mr. Sauer asked me to do, is create like a five-year Capitol Planning list. That is why it is extensive. That is why there are so many projects on there. And I would say that I've been criticized that there's too much on it. I think there's too much on it because maybe five years ago, there wasn't enough on it, and that's what I was told at that time. But anyway, with the gym floor at Warren Elementary, what I have is, I have a, probably an inch thick document that I didn't copy for all of you, that I'm happy to email to you. I didn't wanna waste the paper. But it was, it was basic, basically what it is, is bid specs that were created by, I believe it's Roy Brown. So what we need to do is we need to put this project out to bid. In this document, what it says, the cost to replace that gym floor would be up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And what they are recommending is to do it sooner than they are. So where does that leave us? What we could do is we could...
Let me interrupt you. Is that the cost of replacing the floor? And what is that also addressing the issue that got the floor to where it is today?
So in the report, my understanding from the report is that, I don't wanna be misquoted. I should almost read it exactly where it was, but when the floor was installed, the code was different from what I've been told. That the code used to be that there was a vapor barrier, then the concrete, and then the gym floor. My understanding is that the vapor barrier is on top of the concrete, and it was installed. They basically said that there was a problem with the original installation with the gym floor. Would probably be the best way to put it. So what they need to do in order to fix that is rip up the floor entirely, put a vapor barrier in there, and then put a new floor on top. What I've also been told is that the code that, and this is not my niche, but what I've been told is that the code when the floor was built at the time in, what, eighty-nine, I think, changed. So the, if they were going to install a new floor, it would be, it would be different than the way that they installed it previously. So where does that leave us? School committee and the building subcommittee have been discussing this for months now, if not years. I think there is a reluctance on the school committee to vote the project forward. I do have a legal opinion from our attorney that one of their options would be to vote the project forward. If the school committee voted to put the project forward, what it would do is it would basically give the town sixty days to call a town meeting to essentially deny it if they wanted to. They took no action, then the floor would be approved. So bottom line is we need to get this out to bid. School committee hasn't voted yet. They wanted to hear from you to see what your timeframe is on that. If we put it out to bid without securing the funding, you can put it as a bid anticipation. The problem with that is this document is about an inch thick. It's going to take the companies a long time to come up with the information to get there. If it's a bid anticipation, they may not take it as serious as if it were if the money was funded. So you may not get as many bids or as best a price as you possibly could if we voted the money. So that's kinda where the school committee's at right now, is do we go out with a bid in the anticipation? Or do we just vote the money and then put it out to bid and hopefully get better bids? But it's a timing issue and the clock is ticking.
Is there a problem with the roof up there as well?
At Warren Elementary?
I heard all three schools had roof problems.
So in the, in the front, in the vestibule, there is a leak there, but Warren Elementary's, their roof was replaced not that long ago.
Yeah, it shouldn't have a leak.
Yeah.
But we do have one in the vestibule area up there.
In the, in the area, when you come in, it's been an area that we're gonna have the facilities person look at. It's right to the right of the doorway as you walk in.
My point being is we've invested a lot of money, grant money, in getting all new doors and windows. We're investing into a new gym floor. I mean, I'm back to the maintenance part of it. How do we keep it from happening again? So that's my biggest concern.
Having a new facilities coordinator start today, I think that is gut experience, that is a wide array that can fix small engine repairs, that can deal with roof leaks, and can give us some expert advice in this area, I think is a really good first step.
There we go. All right, so my questions. So is it basically, you're looking from Warren for about two hundred and ten thousand dollars between the elementary school floor and the third of the high school project?
So I think that, I'd like to put them in two separate categories rather than...
So one hundred, fifteen, sixty?
Yes. However, I think that conversation with the mold needs to happen with all three. The school district, the school committee, which I don't wanna speak for the school committee, and Westbrookfield.
I get that. I'm just, my question is, is so where's the sixty coming from, from Quaybottom? Indy? Or where's that money coming from, from your budget to fund that third?
What we would have to do is, the school committee could vote it out of Indy, or we could run a deficit and, you know, see where we end up at the end of the school year.
So just so everybody's aware, twenty percent of Warren's town budget is debt. You know, I've been, made a conscious effort to try and pay down our debt for four years now. This is a pretty big number for the two projects, but they don't, we have to take care of this. It's just a lot. You know, talking about a special town meeting, it needs town approval, whether we have one for the solar, for the solar concerns that we have right now. We schedule another special. Otherwise, our next special is May. So I don't know how long the mold issue at the high school, payment wise, when they're gonna be looking for payment, are they, is this gonna be ongoing for throughout the spring and then looking to start clearing some of these bills? Are you looking for us to hold a special sooner? Or in need with Westbrookfield and you to decide?
In my opinion, the gym floor at Warren is a time issue. I would ask that that take priority over the mold. I think the mold remediation cost is something that we can work out over time. And I think that's something that is bigger than the conversation tonight.
So let me ask you this question also. Maybe you can answer this. You came in the district. We didn't have a facilities director. I get it. I've been saying we need somebody up there for a while now. We never in the budget. I just find that the timing of the position, the posting was kind of, I don't know, coincidental or just this mold, this mold issue happens. We have this horrible thing that happens. The kids have to move. The next thing you know, a job posting comes up from facilities director. I just don't know why this didn't happen back in May. This discussion didn't happen. We were creating this position and it was gonna be funded as of July one.
So we put forth, and I can tell you that in my budgets every year, I put forth not only a facilities person, but put back teachers into the budget. The budget gets cut every year. The reason that the facilities came in is something that the budget subcommittee has talked about over time. The timing was right, and the timing was right because we hired a new Director of Finance and Operations. That person's salary was significantly less than our previous Director of Finance and Operations. So with that and with some savings that we had, we had six teachers retire last year. That's where we got the money to create the facilities director position.
I get that. I'm glad we were able to stay in some areas. I mean, Kami did stay until through October, I think, for the most part. So she was here July to October. We were paying her, correct?
Yeah.
And our new business manager started in summer?
No, well, right before Kami left. September-ish?
Which is, they just overlapped about a month then.
Yeah.
So I just, the position itself though, I'm thankful that we have it and it's long overdue, but I just, it's just, it's difficult to look at the conditions of the buildings. Myself walking through the buildings, being a twenty-year resident, I mean, I know we may sit here and say that the building's looking in great shape, and we've done a lot of work to them. For twenty-year-old buildings in the high school itself, it needs some help. I mean, it's, you know, I sit here and ask for, you know, support with the town hall, you know, trying to find the police station and things like that. We're gonna address this issue, and then all those projects, again, in my, since two thousand and eleven between finance and select board, every year I just hear, we keep putting off all of these other town things because something comes up at the school and we have to fund it. And now all of these other things go by on the wayside, and those other buildings in the town, you know, police department, the town hall and all that is in serious need of money. You know, we didn't receive the grant for the windows, so we have other, you know, we have to look at other options, but this is huge. You know, it's a lot, it's a lot of money. We know with the streetlight project, we're trying to save in all these different areas. We've got more money coming into the town from our savings, and it's just, there it goes again.
So one of the things that I think Mr. Kirk brought up, and he brought it up with the Strategic Planning Committee, where both towns are sitting at the table, is potentially working together, the two towns and the school district, with some of these positions that could, maybe there's overlap. Maybe it is worthy of the discussion because we do have a new facilities type person. If there's something, you know, that you wanna collaborate on or have him give opinions on or continue the conversation with Westbrookfield, I think there's no time like the present.
So I'll just finish with this. I don't know when we're gonna have a special, right? I mean, we may have one sometime in the next sixty to a hundred days, depending on what happens with the solar question, but I mean, it could be addressed then. If we don't, then it's May, realistically, unless we have something in the spring, but we don't really have any plans. Nothing that's pressing besides we may possibly have the solar issue right now.
So if you wait, if you wait till May, the issue with that is going to be, in my opinion, the best time to do the gym floors during the summer when kids aren't there. You'd miss the window if we don't act, I would say, by not long after the new calendar year to get things, to get all the specs, to get somebody to commit to it, get the bid out, get people to, I mean, they're starting to plan. There's some work now.
Well, I get that, and I agree. We probably should have held one with Westbrookfield, but so the seventy-five thousand's coming in. I see that. I see the bill that you're disputing, the district bill, and I agree you should dispute it, but how far do you think the school committee's gonna take this dispute before it starts costing a ton of money illegal?
So our attorneys on retainer, whether the, the bill's not gonna climb, is what I'm saying. That's why we have the retainer. So the monthly fee for our attorney, whether we're in litigation or not, is the same.
Okay. Do we, do you anticipate the one eighty-nine two four going much higher? On the second, on the second, the backside, with the two fifty-five estimate and minus the seventy-five thousand?
The only thing that's not in there is the ATC Industrial Hygienist.
Which is under five?
No, no, no. That's, that's gonna be, I would imagine, less than five thousand. That's that shady. That's the, that's the one thing that we're holding out for. Now, just so everybody understands, I think there's a perception out there that I was holding off on putting this out to the public. A lot of these numbers just came in, you know, within the past weeks. It's been a running tab, and as you can imagine, there's been a lot of moving parts to it.
That was the main reason why that we had you here. We wanted to start the discussion, that people in town be aware that people are hopefully addressing the existing problem and more so hopefully addressing that. You can't afford many of these.
I hope it's the last one I ever see in my career.
Your last word, John?
I have a question for the audience. I'm just curious. Compass Restoration got a hundred and thirty-seven point five thousand. What do you have to do for that kind of money?
Clear the building.
Clean the building?
Suit and pop the barn.
Or the janitor doesn't do that?
Well, not for mold, yeah.
So we clean the building for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars?
And remediate it all with mold.
Mold restoration, I'm an insurance business, mold restoration is very different.
Well, that's a massive, is that, do you have to have a special license and all that other stuff?
They had hazmat suits. They had signs, basically. Didn't have anybody enter the building. It was, in my opinion, it was a nightmare for me, but it was, it's a operation that I hope I'm gonna see again. It's like watching something on a TV. They've got all kinds of equipment and...
It's like dealing with a disaster.
Yes, that's exactly what it's like.
It's just like a hospital, though, if it's maintained and cleaned regularly, you know?
So that was brought up to the hygienist, who is the air quality specialist, and it is not my niche. But I can tell you that that exact question was asked at a public forum, and the response that the hygienist gave is that mold can grow very quickly in a matter of twenty-four to forty-eight hours if the conditions are right. And the conditions that we had this past summer, in the words of the Department of Public Health, and it's in the report that is published on the website, what he told me is that we had a natural disaster without a disaster, meaning we had a flood because the atmosphere was so flooded with humidity that it was a problem that was unforeseen. The other thing I would add too is we weren't the only school in the area. We're the one that got the most amount of negative press on it. But there are some other communities in our area that I dealt with this, and they didn't get any money from the insurance companies to go firsthand.
Yeah, that's my second question. Why didn't they, the insurance covered a whole deal? I mean...
So insurance company, and you're in the insurance business?
Mold is a limited.
Yes.
They don't, they don't, like the building value, you have a certain limit on mold coverage.
And my understanding, and if you look at the spreadsheet, I think it says three terms, twenty-five thousand. Our insurance coverage was, the cap, the ceiling was, was twenty-five thousand. And what they did is they gave us three separate occurrences, so in...
But it's not just mold here. There's a bunch of stuff that was, you know, expensed in here, so it's not just the mold.
Yeah. No, I absolutely agree. One of the things that we had to do, unfortunately, was we had to plan to open two buildings still. We were, we were working on opening Compass Middle School in Palmer at the same time that we were working on mold remediation. We were losing school days. You know, kids weren't getting their education, so some of that expense, a small amount of that expense, was to get Compass open.
Okay, folks, your page on track. Dari, anything else, Johnny? I think you have two seconds.
Let's just be clear about the cause of the mold, as was spelled out in the EMEA report and referenced an assessment done by United Adjusting Services. The humidity may have exacerbated the problem, but the fundamental cause had to do, and this is the three instances that they are willing to pay some money for, overflowing drain pans in the, in the air conditioning and heating units, failed valves, they found four leaking valves, who knows how long they've been leaking, and roof leaks causing moisture. So, I mean, those are the fundamental issues that caused mold to develop, and it takes a long time. If you're not properly maintaining your drain pans, they will collect the debris, club up drain lines, and after a period of time, the normal condensate coming out of a system will overflow. And if it's not cleaned out regularly, and if valve leaks are allowed to happen, you know, that ends up resulting in mold. So, let's make sure we're all clear about the fundamental root causes, 'cause that's what you guys are asking. We need to make sure it doesn't happen again, not only in this building, but the other two buildings. I'm sorry, I took longer than you just said.
No shit, that's the whole purpose of getting the conversation and getting the people in town on board to what, Curtis? You wanna wrap it up? You gotta move on.
Thank you. I guess, so I'm gonna go back to the school committee, and I'm gonna, they're gonna ask me, what do the selectmen wanna do with the Warren Gym Floor? So, I guess my last question would be, could you give me some direction as to a timeframe for the gym floor at Warren Elementary?
Right now? Takes a special, regardless, so we got forty-five days to schedule a special.
And it has to be approved.
And it has to get approved. I, my firmly believe, I think we're gonna end up having a special town meeting with regards to solar sometime within the next three or four months, I would imagine, depending on how we process this, so. I would imagine we're gonna have a special, Brad, I guess, you know, they should probably, I would say move forward with the bid process, in my opinion.
You anticipate it?
Anticipated special, I would say, I would anticipate us to hold a special.
So, with the bid process, the bid process either, is the anticipated bid?
You can do either one, Brad, but if it's not approved, I, you know, if the voters turn around and say no,
Yeah.
there's nothing we can do, I mean, it's, we're the voters, we're only three votes. So, I mean, I mean, you can say we're, we'll have a special, I mean, I would, wouldn't, personally myself, I wouldn't be as anticipated, 'cause I would wanna get the most favorable bids possible, and work, and speak to town council, speak to your council regarding that, is that how we can, how you can bid this project? But I would say we're probably gonna hold a special. We're gonna have to identify a funding source and how you wanna do this, and to move forward, whether through capital, through free, through raise appropriate, whatever it may be, you know, we have to address the issue.
So, if the school committee were to vote to borrow, would it be better to do, would it, would it be better to do that in November or in December? Sorry.
Probably have a discussion to have with the treasurer too.
Okay.
I mean, maybe get Don involved, and, you know, I just, I don't wanna tell you one way. Maybe have a discussion with Don, and we all get on board with that, but it, we'll have to have a special.
Okay.
And put it before the voters.
Thank you.
And take the bet.
Mrs. King, let's wrap it up.
Well, I'm also asking for a special town meeting so that we could approve a moratorium until May, so that we can go over the solar bylaws, and if we're gonna hold one possibly for the school, it seems like it would be best to do them together, to save the town one instead of two separate ones. And the sooner the better.
I'm a little confused, I was, so the town clerk had attacked me, is that the residents were actually seeking the board to hold, to hold a town meeting, and they were seeking signatures, did I get that right, that?
They were originally looking for to do a citizen's petition.
Citizen's petition, to hold the special.
Right.
So, is that already in the works, or is it not yet, you're waiting for us first?
We're waiting, we were gonna do you first, because it seems easier and more considerate to you, to you to authorize the town meeting, if you wanna sponsor an article.
So, let me ask you this, we can hold a special town meeting, but should planning and conservation be involved with this? I mean, there are, I mean, yes, we can just schedule a meeting, but it really need others involved with how to draft this article, how it's gonna carry us through till May, what is, the wording and everything, so, and then I know we have members of conservation here. Would you like to say anything and be at this choice, or?
I would love to.
Any cheers, Yolo?
Yeah, so, we really support this, at this point, we're inundated with plans. We live in a very wet town, we all know that, we live in a steep, wet town. The trees are being removed, we have high perch water tables, soils that don't drain very well, they're de-soils. It's a problem for people who live down gradient. A lot of the solar companies are now pulling out of the wetlands because we're being stern, but it still doesn't alleviate some of the problems that occur, and a moratorium would be ideal, simply because we could take a little breathing room, look at some of the problems, and address them head-on with amendments to the bylaw. Because right now, our bylaw does not have any very specific, whether we put a cap on it, or we say you can't bill, I mean, there's so many different avenues and different ways to approach the bylaws that would make, nobody's saying no to solar, but we're just saying, can we be a little more responsible about how we allow them into our town? We do have intense saturation around Little Rest Road, and I just wanna correct you, because we have one, two, three, four, five, now it's in a sixth project in that area, six projects in one neighborhood.
One neighborhood, hundreds of acres.
So, and Coy Hill now will be, have two hundred, almost three hundred acres around Coy Hill will potentially be solar projects. It's steep, it's wet, high perch water table, you ask the farmers, they lose their equipment over there. So, these are the kinds of things that conservation is concerned with, and, you know, wildlife is being, they fenced in those areas, wildlife doesn't have a place to go. So, anyway, I could go on and on, but we are interested in thinking a little bit more about how we can approach solar to allow it in our town, but with some constraints.
So, my question, Joyce, just, how long, forty-five days, I mean, we're going before Christmas, or we're looking at January, February?
Right.
Try and do something to wait till May to do a permanent bylaw change, or?
Well, I suppose there's a couple of things, I'm sorry, there's a couple of things, is there, the bylaw change would take place, can we put a moratorium, how does that take, how does that happen? Can we, can we, at the special town meeting, we can vote to have a moratorium on solar until the special town, where we could have bylaws, amendments to the bylaw.
In May.
In May.
Right. Yeah, it would just be the moratorium to carry us till May, and so we make the real bylaw changes.
Correct.
Like language needs to be specific enough and detailed enough to cover us those five months, or whatever, I mean, it's just a starting point to get us to May to make the big changes, I guess.
Right.
So, and I'm not sure what those need to be, it's probably gonna be a matter of town council, conservation planning, you know.
I mean, is there a possibility that you could appoint a, like a solar council? In the meantime, that we can all get together, members of conservation, planning, you know, I'm sure that even the assessors office has concerns about certain behaviors.
Well, we've.
So, why don't you get one member from planning, one member from conservation, one member from the assessors and that, and do it that way?
Or we start looking at some of the neighboring towns like Brookfield, I mean, you know, we just mentioned, you know, what they're doing, I mean, can we, can we piggyback on some of the work that they're doing already and use that as a template?
Oh, absolutely.
For what we need to do.
Oh, absolutely.
Um, 'cause, I mean, it seems like time is of the essence here, so, do we wanna try and wait till May's meeting, or do we wanna try and do something in January, after the holidays?
Well, I mean, so, the other, the other option is that, as soon as next week, we can post a meeting saying that we are, we can post in the newspaper saying that we are making amendments to the bylaw, right? Because that will now become retroactive. We make amendments to the bylaw, we hold public hearings, people show up, and we talk about changes that we want to institute. And if we do that, starting next week, two weeks from now, I'm pretty sure, I could be wrong, so we would have to check, that that would be retroactive.
I'm not sure if it's retroactive, I'm not sure on that one.
Or is that only for new bylaws?
I think it might be only for new, but, I'm not sure.
I don't think we can go back.
Right.
I don't think we can go back, you can only pause what we're doing now until we get to May, I guess, or we can put something in place till we get to May to make the full bylaw change, so.
So, but pausing, it would be a town vote?
Yes.
When you have town.
Okay, all right.
It doesn't bylaw change, when you post it, you're gonna have an amendment to the bylaw, if the bylaw passes, whatever passes goes back to the time when it was posted.
I don't know if it does, I'm not sure on that, I mean.
That's typically how it works, that's how it works.
But he was saying that maybe it's only for a new bylaw, so it's.
It might only be for that, I'm not sure.
It's any bylaw.
But we can check with council on that, that's, that's a challenge that Jeff.
That's what, your basic concern is when you, you came and addressed the board, in their offices, you're looking for a breathing room.
Breathing room, right, and I did bring Oakham's wording for their moratorium that was accepted, and they are in the process of having their meeting to approve that. So, I don't believe in reinventing the wheel, if you can, I spent, have spent a lot of time going to different towns, talking to them about what they're doing, so I brought that, if you wanna use that wording.
Don't we do that all the time?
I'm just curious, Dari will probably answer it, the solar farms that are in town now, what's the tax revenue on that? Just a, just some idea.
At all, I would say under two hundred, over a hundred, a hundred two, I don't know. Under two hundred.
Hundred thousand.
No, under two hundred thousand, I think.
A year, well, that's something to consider.
I can, I, we've done a lot of research, we have a lot of paperwork. One of our stops has been the assessors office, and that was a question we asked. We have eight functioning solar facilities, what is the tax revenue from that? We were thinking, wow, it must be a lot. On average, we get sixteen thousand five hundred dollars apiece.
Per, well, it's.
For, per solar farm, that's what we were told.
Could it be one hundred fifty thousand dollars a year?
So, that's, so that's two hundred and something.
Three, well, it's nothing sneeze about, the town doesn't even have a cash market anymore.
It's not a lot.
It's not a lot, I mean, it's a fair amount of money, it's not a lot for the amount of development, I guess.
A lot of heartbreak, a lot of anxiety, a lot of everything, it's not a lot.
A lot of property damage, a lot of values of property going down.
Rich?
Yeah, well, that's what I was just gonna say, that we have specific zoning in town, we have rural residential zoning in town, which everything's pretty well regulated, it's a single-family buildings, yet we're allowing industrial pieces to be put in, and I get the tax revenue side, but all the neighboring people are making a huge hit on their real estate, whether they, you know, a big number, so we have to.
Well, at cool again, Warren's not exactly the greatest in real estate, period.
I'm well aware of the real estate.
Far enough, but just sold.
Well aware of the real estate. No, but.
I just bought your last.
So, I mean, that's one of the things that I think should be considered when we move forward in the bylaws.
I mean, if you had twenty-eight.
Setting up an overlay and, and keep, and, and there's plenty of places where it could do well in town, we have degraded areas, that are old gravel banks that are already degraded, and they're not in the greatest shape. Some of the dust, there are places where it would be better than sticking them in people's backyards and things. There's a lot of other areas.
It'd be.
Mr. Vorgi, I'll let you close.
There are companies applying for permits that are talking and including batteries in their plans. Then when's it gonna stop? The next company that comes in wants to put in two batteries, what are we gonna do with all this hazardous stuff twenty years from now?
That's, you know, Mrs. King provided some documentation that.
And is it gonna be in our groundwater, we have wells up there, we don't have town water up there.
You know, once, there is like everything else, there's a life to these panels that, what happens, you know, they're great promises now, but I don't think people realize the amount of money it costs to decommission.
And I really, really worry about the towns, town having to pay to get rid of these, will be destitute.
Because from, I think from the information that you provided, it was just under a hundred thousand dollars an acre.
An acre, like.
The cost, that's what the cost involved, when something like this is decommissioned, which is a lot of money.
And the town. Yeah. And the town will have no schools, no, no police force, no nothing, and we'll all be gone because we can't afford to deal with it.
Okay, we got started. Adam?
So, I just wanna say, from a public safety standpoint, I would definitely throw my hat in the ring of support of that. You know, all I'm seeing come across my desk is solar and marijuana, that's, those are the two big ones in the industries that are out there that everybody's pushing for one way or the other. I do have some concerns in some of the changes in the trends, and one specifically is the battery storage. The reality is that's where we're seeing that stuff go, because we're so inundated, in my opinion, is we're so inundated with solar right now, that there's so much electricity out there, that they're, they're not using it, so now they wanna store it everywhere, and that's where this whole thing is gonna come into play. So, you know, I think that, quite honestly, I think, you know, and the other side that we're seeing is that, you know, the trend that really bothers me is that what's happened with the existing solar fields that we have, it becomes impossible to track who actually owns them after a certain point. And that's a big problem, because, you know, six months down the road, they sell it to one person, and then they sell it to another provider, then they sell it to another provider, and three years into it, you have no idea who to contact for emergency services. Not only that, the maintenance isn't being done on them and everything, so I would be in support of that for those reasons. I mean, we have some trends in the industry that make me a little bit nervous, and we have these existing fields that are not even being maintained the way that they were originally supposed to be, and put out by the, by the planning board, so, you know, I think we need to get that stuff straightened out before we, you know, before we continue to do this. I understand that everybody that has a field right now is making money off of it, I get that point, but it's coming at a cost in some, some other ways. So, just for what it's worth, I, I've seen other towns do it, and I would be in agreement here with this town, just for, because of some of the things I've seen.
One more, man.
I, I just don't see how you can put a solar field up like this. Last night the planning meeting, the fire pump, which I definitely support, would not go near that fence, beyond that fence to put out a fire, it would be horrific. So, it's all up to national grid. That sounds to me like you just dropping, some, it's dropping the ball. Somebody has to have a plan to put a fire out, and it can't be the local fire department, because that, that's, it's too, it's too huge, it's just too overwhelming for that sort of thing. So, to say you're gonna call national grid, and maybe the guy that's down the road with his truck is gonna show up an hour later, and everyone's gonna watch this field burn, just seems very irresponsible to everybody, there's toxins, the batteries, they say it's fine, they're encased. They can say that now, you know, the ones that over encased twenty years ago, now they claim we're not encased. So, I just think it's, it's a nightmare waiting to happen.
We get the discussion going?
Yes, and if we could at least start the conversation like a solar advisory committee while you're, you're trying to get together a town meeting.
Joyce is gonna handle that.
Yep, excellent. Yay, Joyce, no problem.
I think you have the full support of the board to continue on, so there's no, no discussion there, that, I mean, we are only one vote, Bert.
Yep.
Just wondering, so are we, are we deciding to, we're probably gonna schedule a town meeting, and then they're not gonna have to get the pitch, I think they need to know that.
I think that was one of the questions that these folks were trying to get resolved.
Right, we, we do have, I think we have thirty-one or thirty-two signatures that we could, we can give you.
If the board decides to talk, that's not recording.
Right, right, which is why we didn't go for two hundred.
Might as well get it done, I mean, we have the solar thing going on right now, we have the school issues going on right now.
So, do you wanna mull it all, and then just end up picking a date?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can all it over and pick a date, but I think we need to pick a date within the next two weeks, 'cause we're probably not gonna hold it before Christmas, we're looking at January, February, 'cause it's gotta be posted forty-five days, so.
How about that?
I think we have to make a decision at our next meeting.
I, my personal opinion is that, yes, this means a lot to a lot of people, and if it was three days before Christmas, they'd be here.
No, I understand that, but.
Three days before Christmas?
No, a week before Christmas.
Why are four dates?
Four dates.
Let the board take a little advice, and we'll come up with a plan, and that's what we gotta do, that's what we'll do.
In the meantime, we still have a lot of work to do on how to write the article, something like that, so, we're leaving it up to.
Ken. You're gonna leave it up to, well, you know, there's, there's a group of people here who. You're gonna leave it up to, well, you know, there's, there's a group of people here who are willing to do that. Would, can we recruit a member from the Board of Selectmen to join us?
Sure.
Who's that member going to be?
Who will that be?
Well, Mark's, of course.
I, I'll go. I, I don't have a problem.
Okay, you'll go?
You'll go? You wanna go?
Nice, I'll go if you don't want, I'll go.
You'll go.
Okay, I'll go.
Daria's your ma'am?
Daria?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
True, welcome, thank you.
All right, cheers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was an honor.
Thank you all.
A lot. What?
The chair.
Oh, am I the chair? Yep, okay. There is no, no...
Okay, folks?
I don't have a, I don't have a...
We need to go.
No, 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 I don't take turns at all. I, 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 but, uh, yeah, so I, I think it's not a, it's not an issue when I saw this trend concerning... And it's only gonna be, you know, it's only gonna get worse, because again, we don't need electricity right now, so we're just gonna store it all. You're very welcome.
Folks? Hello, hello, hello?
It means over.
Folks, are you still gonna continue? Please continue the conversation. Thank you. Comments and concerns?
I, this is a free item I'd like to discuss. Backtrack to the last time I talked to you about the parking lot. What are we seeing on that?
I have, uh, five bids that I'm in, this week. I'll get three of them back by Friday. We'll make a decision next week and get it done before the fifth day or whatever.
So I, I checked with a company called Mass Broken Stone, and they have Sardi Road to do tomorrow. That's all they have. I checked with Palm Paving. They only have, uh, a road that's small, is on Bridge Street.
Bridge Street, uh, Spring Street, I think, they're doing Sardi Road.
They're two different companies. I mean, nobody has the parking lot on record, is what I'm saying.
No. No, they don't, because one, one of the issues is, one of the, the first bids that I received was over the, the entire budget for the whole parking lot. Just the paving. It doesn't include the preparation. It doesn't include the concrete barriers. It doesn't include the strating. It doesn't include anything. So, the only way to, for me to legally do that is I split the package into two, to make it under a, a dollar amount that does not require me to go on the computer and get that timeframe taken out, because right now we're gonna, we're gonna end up coming to the end of the paving season, and, uh, like I said, the first bid that I got was two thousand dollars over the budget for the entire project. I wanna get the parking lot done this year.
No. The parking, I look, I'm not an engineer, but if we don't put a storm drain in there, you're gonna have ice problems all the time.
Yeah, it wasn't required. I went through the proper channels through conservation, and it's basically, I was told that all we did is remove the building, and it's just gonna shed like it always did for the last two hundred and fifty years to the back of the property.
As long as you got that right.
The water department did not have an issue with that. Conservation has already, I already have the documentation signed. Planning board issues have all been addressed. It's just a matter of me getting the three bids.
Okay, and is issue of contamination, has that been verified?
Contamination?
Supposedly it's contamination from the laundromat.
I have no discussion regarding contamination.
My second item I'd like to talk about, this board issued a directive to the police chief to add his monthly report mileage on his vehicles. The last time I got that from him was back in July. I don't even get a report from him on that. August, September?
They go on our...
Just wonder why he's not doing it. He issued a directive from this board. And I'd just like to follow up and give you an answer on that.
Sure can.
Thank you. Last but not least, I understand the police chief's contract is up next year.
Yes, it is.
Is there any discussion about not renewing it?
Uh, that's a personal matter, and I'm certainly not gonna discuss, uh, somebody's contract in an open public meeting.
Yes, yes or no?
Has there been conversation, no, between the board, no. Uh, you correct that, yes. We have, uh, required by the contractual obligations for the present contract that we have to notify the individual by, by December, six months. Whether we, which way we plan to go, and that will be addressed by the board. But I'm certainly not gonna get into a personnel issue.
Just trying to add that. So, two years ago, three years ago, when I was chair, fifteen and seventeen, our last secretary had, you know, I drafted a letter to go into negotiations with the current police chief. At the time, it was Mr. Gag, Mr. Lavash, or the board members, shared the letter with them, see, you know, their opinion on what we're gonna do moving forward, and the board took a vote on that, and then we moved forward. So like Mark said, you know, the contract does state that we have to notify in one way or the other, six months before, whether we're gonna negotiate, or we're gonna move in a different direction and, and offer another contract. So we have to notify them by December, in writing.
So, we're basically, as residents, just asking you three people whether or not you're gonna renew his contract? That's all. We have a right to ask you that question? You can answer it or you cannot answer it?
He said we do have the right.
Okay, could, could I just ask the three selectmen if you're gonna renew his contract or not? Yes or no? Or just ignore the question? That's all, it's up to you.
It's a personnel issue. That, that's him in executive session.
I'm just asking a simple question, okay? As a taxpayer, you're held accountable to us, and I just wanna know if you're gonna renew his contract or not?
That will be information we are...
Obviously, my, you know, you're not, you're not gonna answer, but the other two selectmen, you're welcome to try.
You're not gonna get an answer to that question today, Mr. Corwell. I don't know why you wanna go down this road. This is a personnel issue between...
Because I'm a taxpayer, and he affects the whole town.
I understand that, and the process will be followed according to the law.
The fact that he's, he works for the town is not a personal issue to me. He works for the town. He's accountable to the town. We're just asking whether or not you're gonna send him a letter before December, you know, if you intend to renew his contract. We, we don't have a right to know that.
When we get to December, when the timeframe comes up, you will certainly have the right, and it becomes public record. But I'm certainly not gonna sit there and answer the question.
So, are you gonna, are you gonna renew it or not, Mike?
That's, I won't tell, tell you to this one.
Why, why not? Why not?
Because I'm not. It's very simple.
I can just interject a little bit, Brian. It, it came up under comments concerns, thank Brian, Mr. Corwell. So, we really couldn't actually cast a vote, or, or, we shouldn't put an opinion out there right now, 'cause it's really, it came up under comments concerns. It was an agenda item. I think we can take a vote at that point in time, which it will be. I'm assuming we're gonna have to make a decision on it. But because it was raised under comments concerns, that wasn't on the agenda, and he has the, if, whatever decision is made, he also has the right to be here, so we'd have to notify him. So if we did, sir, we would be in violation of personal bylaw issue. We'd have an issue with the chief, the chief could...
Okay.
He should have the right to be here. We're gonna make a decision.
As, as a citizen, okay, I'm gonna tell you three people that seven years ago I ran for selectmen, okay? And I've been harassed, my wife, okay, seventy-one-year-old wife, I've been harassed for seven years now by him, okay? Please vote no. I just, I want a, a chief of police that has a good work ethic. I want a chief of police that's honest and has integrity. That's all I'm asking, please. Okay, I've been paying taxes for thirty years in this town. It's all I'm asking for.
And the...
Nothing personal?
Will be addressed in December, according to contract.
Okay, well, that's my opinion. And, you know, thank you.
Michael?
Yes, hi there. Uh, I'd also like, I'm, I'm just gonna make this very brief. I'm just gonna make a brief statement, take me under two minutes. Uh, so I, in my personal opinion, uh, I am not in support of you renewing the chief's contract. Uh, I'm not gonna name specifics. I just, just, take me two minutes to just explain this. You don't even have to answer. So, these are just a few, this is just a pile of five incidences that I have with evidence against about not renewing the chief. Uh, the police department is not giving me the answer.
I'm gonna stop here right there, Michael.
Oh, come on, Mark. I, I, all I'm doing is just...
You can't keep doing this, Michael. You come in here and throw hand grenades without the, even the courtesy of having a gentleman, whether you like him or dislike him, or, or the board has an opinion. You cannot keep doing this, Michael. I have been very patient and have given you the courtesy every time you come in.
Right.
Every time you come in, you start throwing out charges and paperwork and this and that, and, and the gentleman isn't even here to do it. It's not an agenda. If you would like to be put on the agenda, I will put you on the agenda. But this is not a subject for comments and concerns. I have been very, very adamant about that.
Okay.
You wanna be put on the agenda, and you wanna sit there, and we've been down this road before, and you did it, come through with what you told the board you were gonna do. That's why you were never put on the agenda. You were on the agenda, we took you off the agenda, because you couldn't do what this board asked you to do. What do you wanna talk about? Who are you gonna talk about? And I need specifics, because I have to legally notify these people
Right.
that you are gonna bring this up, and you didn't do that. That's why you were taken off the agenda, and you're gonna come here and do this again. You are not gonna take over this meeting. This is a business meeting. Comments and concerns are very short little things, not to sit here and drag out ten years of your issues with the police department. If you have issues with the police department,
Yep.
take them up with the police department. If there's something that has been done illegally, then the board will certainly address it. But I cannot allow you, every time you come late, to sit here with stacks of papers and throw hand grenades and then disappear for three months. You don't have any documentation. I can't sit there and allow you to point fingers at somebody when the gentleman isn't even here. It's just not the right thing to do. So if you would like to be put on the agenda, make arrangements with Mrs. Isara. We have always been accommodating, but this is the way this is gonna be run.
Okay, so maybe I misunderstood it. So, so to take your offer, so you're willing to put me on the agenda?
You want to build an agenda, and the same thing as last time. I wanna know what you wanna talk about, because we have, I think it's fear to give the board
Right.
the exact opportunity that you have to sit there and do six months' worth of painful work.
Right.
And I think as a courtesy, you have to relay what you're gonna talk about. So if the board has to do some homework, or some research, or find some facts and figures to dispute the facts and figures and the things that, I think that courteous should be extended both ways. So you are very welcome to, very own a comment.
Okay.
I just, I just think comments and concerns has been hijacked into just an open meeting, and this is where we end up going. Now, if you wanna be on our agenda, Michael, I would certainly put you on the agenda. But, again...
Yeah, no, I understand.
And that's what you said last time, but you didn't meet the requirements, and then we ended up having, I had a conversation with your attorney. That gentleman had no clue what was going on.
Right.
So until we get something in order, we're gonna do this like an adult, and we're gonna do it the way it's supposed to be done.
Okay, so, so I guess...
Very welcome to get on the agenda.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate it.
Conversation...
Okay, so, so can we, can you add an agenda item that if I will then file a formal complaint requesting the board fire the chief of police based upon the evidence that I present that night? And I want the board to take a vote to yes and no to fire him, and, so, so we will provide you the evidence. You make a decision, and if he's fired, he's gone the next morning. If he's not fired, then he stays.
And, and obviously...
I'll agree to that. Let's, let's do an agenda item for that.
The board will sit there and obviously end up getting with town council to see what the, the situation calls for. Because the, the board is certainly not gonna sit there and have a public trial for, for any individual.
Well, no, I understand, but you want me to give you the evidence, and, and I have no problem taking on my evidence and presenting it to the board in public with the chief here. And I already know on my, on my legal side, I already have enough evidence to fire the chief. So the issue is, is that I'm complaining about is I've already complained, I've been complaining about the chief to, back since two thousand and seven, and I have all those emails for all those selectmen in between, and, and I'm not here to argue with you. I'm just here to say I'm frustrated, because I've complained to so many sets of boards of selectmen, and they write letters, you need to go talk to the chief and complain to the chief, but you don't go to the chief and complain to the chief when you're complaining about him. It's been this board...
But there's been no documentation, Michael. It's all been hearsay and...
Well, I understand that, but these are all issues that predate seven years before you've been here. And I still have all those records, and not any of those people on that board of selectmen have done anything to discipline the chief. I have a police report from two thousand nine against the chief that he assaulted me. I have issues now. I have issues with fake traffic tickets that I got out of court. Here's the transcripts against warrant police officers that testified. So, so I'm willing to share this information, but I need to have an agenda item that I can present the evidence, but I'm not gonna present the evidence if I'm not saying it's a complaint, 'cause I'm wasting my time. So I appreciate your offer, but my offer in return is, that's what I'm looking for right now, is to come in front and say, I want him fired. This is what I want.
You know, personal matters, it's not sitting there. I am not gonna sit there and convene over a public meeting, Michael. There are ways to, to do things. There are ways to discipline. There are ways to do everything that is required by law.
Right.
I'm certainly not gonna sit here and open up there, and sit there and have judge, jury, and, and a big, that's not the purpose of, of meeting on Tuesday nights. This is a business meeting.
Right, right, no, I, no, I understand it, but, but, so are you acceptable to do that? To, to willing to take a vote, whether to discipline or, or whatever? And then we'll do an agenda item, and that'll accomplish what I want and accomplish what you're asking for.
I, I'll be quite hon, I, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you I'm gonna do one, one thing or another.
Okay.
But as far as I'm concerned, you, you know, this discussion is over. This is what happens time after time after time. So, we will send you, I will give you a call and, and say, this is a requirement. If you wanna sit down and, and either you're gonna comply, or you're not gonna be put on the agenda. Same thing as last time. We went down this road months ago, and you are ready to go and ready to go, and you had your attorney, and you were gonna do this, and there's few simple things we asked you to do, you couldn't do. I'm just, you're tired of playing this game. I'm tired of playing this game.
Right, right, but on the other side, too, is you also told me in conversation that you said, if I don't wanna do this, then I could certainly sue the town. And you've admitted that. You've already encouraged me to sue the town.
I, I've encouraged you to sue the town?
Yes.
And, and when did this conversation take place?
Because you and I even had a conversation, and, when I said, 'cause I had complained to you back a year ago, or whatever it was, about some other stuff that we gave you the evidence of, that nothing has happened. And then you had said, well, selectmen have immunity. If you sue us, the taxpayers should be the one that I should be suing, 'cause you said they're the one that appoint the selectmen. I mean, I'm willing to work with you. I just don't understand how, how every time I complain about the police, and, and the doors are shut.
I, I really, I really take it seriously to be putting words in my mouth, Michael, that, that conversation. I did not take this. I haven't, I would not sit there and tell you, any individual would sit there and say, hey, Mike, you know what?
Right.
What I recommend, sue the town.
You told me that.
That, that, yeah.
All right, well, I'll, I'll follow up and see what we wanna do privately out of this. All right, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Having enough fun?
Hey, just one more thing.
Okay.
As entertaining as the rest of the night, but, uh, I've been asked by a few residents, what's the process we go to to have streetlights taken care of? I mean, everybody's supporting all these little LED lights, but they're not clear on how to get replacement stuff, so...
I, well, I couldn't... Place was meaning they're burnt out, or that one?
Yeah.
They need to contact the office.
Contact...
Contact the office. They have to call California. They call Springfield. Who calls Hardwick? It's just ridiculous. They're gonna be out tomorrow, isn't it? We're not taking over them.
The only issue is you contact our office. Where's the main's phone in place?
Anything, Ken?
Oh, uh, I'm scared. You have business, is that right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Or Adam, I understand that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Adam.
I just wanted to let the townspeople know, if they haven't officially heard, we'll put it up on Facebook on, on both sides. I know police as well. Uh, but the town is officially merging with Roslyn Regional Dispatch effective Thursday, November first, at nine AM. So, uh, so I just wanted everyone to be aware of that. They really shouldn't notice much of the difference in service of any kind. Uh, numbers are all still the same, so that we can assure people that, uh, you know, they're, they're gonna call the nine-five-nine-five number like they always would've. There's not gonna be any disruption. It's just gonna ring into a different place. Uh, I just wanted them to be aware of that, so to alleviate some, uh, you know, concern that, that people may have. We've been talking about this for a little while, uh, but that is officially gonna happen, uh, uh, this, this coming Thursday. So, uh, for what it's worth, we'll put some additional information out, uh, on our, our social media and whatnot, but, uh, we just wanna make sure that everyone knows behind the scenes, there's been a lot of work done to get all the bugs out and everything, so we can deliver the best product we can to everybody, so...
I put up a notice on the website yesterday on the police page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the only thing I just, again, we, we received notice, we did not receive the grant for the town hall. It was a window project. So, it's, it's tough, but we'll, we'll figure something out. So, I reached out to the, the parties involved at the town hall, at the town hall and conservatory... So I reached out to the, the parties involved at the town hall, at the town hall and consideration, they want, I'm sorry, historical. So we're gonna try and schedule a meeting sometime in November, um, again, to go over, you know, what we wanna be moving forward. We at least wanna try and get the first four windows done, just for someone who's part of this. Um, we have some money that's been allocated, but we do need to put more money into that to cover the cost. So, um, I'll have more information after we meet with these groups to see what we can do to get that project going. Um, and I'll keep you informed. That's it, Adam.
Uh, I just have a couple of things. Uh, I know, Adam, you put on the sign, informational sign outside your parking lot thanking the people, but I, I do wanna, uh, I know you've been very good that you had your spaghetti supper day last week and I'm sure that on behalf of the board, you would pass your thanks to the community for support.
No, it went, it went fantastic. It's the first year unfortunately I had to miss, you know, the issue with my mother's health. Uh, so unfortunately, you know, I, I love that event every year, but it went very well from all of the others that I've told. We had a lot of compliments. I think they raised close to forty-five hundred dollars from the fireman's association, so it was very successful. And, uh, you know, we definitely think it's, it's become a kind of an automatic thing. We got a ton of donations from Bezzies, from all kinds of different, you know, so it's kind of a welcoming event to everybody. And I think, and now we just, we've swallowed hundreds of people every year, so it's become a.
So I, I did wanna bring it up on behalf of Adam.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Do that. I'd also like to, uh, thank Cornerstone Bank and Angela and her crew down there that, uh, since they did sell to Cornerstone and no longer Spencer, that they did continue the community involvement. At Halloween, they had a crowd at the school, which I saw Adam up there that was absolutely. I didn't know there was that many people in town.
Hundreds, hundreds of people, yeah, that was great.
And I would like to thank the, the bank for still stepping up to that. The fire department had a presence down here, the police department had a presence down here. And for the amount of people and there was a lot of work done by a lot of volunteers. And I would like to, on behalf of the town, thank the people that were involved in that, that's a terrific thing. Also, on behalf of the Friends of the Town Hall, that they had a very successful Polish Plate fundraiser last weekend. I'm sure that they would like to pass on their thanks to the people that supported that. Uh, Pox and Rec every year, that, uh, you don't know the amount of work that goes into putting in that spook house on the bottom floor here. That is much appreciated, that again is all volunteer work. And one last thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Becky, that Mr. Gagnon called and said that the cell tower is on schedule for delivery to November twelfth. So I guess from what I understand that that is on track, that the curing phase of the concrete is just about over and hopefully they will have service before the, the bad weather flies.
So that help downtown?
That's the plan.
They say.
Wow.
If you're a Verizon customer.
Right, if you're a Verizon customer.
I went up there the other day, it's almost, I mean, the slab's there, the bolt's coming out of the slab and they're ready to receive the tower. It looked pretty good. I understand that no trespassing sign has been since taken down. Uh, how they're gonna secure the area, I don't know, but, uh, there wasn't, no trespassing sign up there, but they've done a lot of work on upgrading and stuff.
The cell tower after three long.
It's looking pretty good.
Years is, is finally coming to fruition, so. And with that, I will, uh, next meeting date, do we have anything on the schedule?
Uh, it's gonna depend.
Okay. Well, thank you all, folks. We end up having, uh, we have to go into executive session and another couple of meetings to get through tonight, so. At this time, we will return this. Johnny, you did the paper.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to enter an executive session in accordance with GL Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, two and three, to conduct collective bargaining sessions with the Teamsters Union, Local four oh four, and discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and open meetings. May have a definite effect on negotiation, please, position of public.
Hello, folks. Michael Burrell here again. I'm actually adding a, uh, quick video at the very end of the, um, Tuesday, October thirtieth. Uh, Warren bought a selectman video. Uh, I got, so today is Wednesday, October thirty-first, it's one PM exactly. And I'm doing this video because a Warren resident, uh, sent me a email this morning, uh, after watching, that watched me on, um, live on TV there in Warren. And, uh, basically said i- in general terms that they agreed with me that Chairman Mark Richard was full of crap in the comment that he said to me. So after thinking of that and having a good laugh this morning, that's kind of why I'm actually in a good mood right now. So I'm going to, uh, since Mark wouldn't allow me to say much at all, and this is no disrespect to Mark. Uh, Mark and I talked after the meeting and the cameras were shut off and he is allowing me to be on the agenda to lodge, um, a, either a, I'm working on the exact information, but it's either going to be a, uh, it's gonna be myself and a few others of my close friends of a citizen's complaints uh, against Chief Spakowski of disciplinary hearings, including termination of his employment. And no, we're not waiting till the end of his contract, we're pushing for that immediately. So having a good laugh this morning reading that email and thank you, uh, to that Warren resident who, who sent me that information, who understands what my story is, that, uh, Mark and I, um, haven't been quite on the same page. And this is not a video to attack Mark, it's just a simple video. Uh, and Mark did apologize to me after the meeting off camera, that he will allow me on the agenda and that's all that I'm asking for. So this is an open video to the citizens and residents of Warren and it's also an open video to the three selectmen, uh, because this is going to open the door and open everybody's eyes. Whether you're a resident or whoever you are who watches this video, that the Warren Police Department has lots and lots of problems. The officers, the bulk of the officers are out of control and, and I'm only showing this to you because I'm having a good laugh this morning and I'm gonna show you some of the evidence that I was, like, for example, I, I had this set of paperwork that I was trying to show Mark and Mark wouldn't allow me to explain one piece of paper and it was only just five or six issues out of my fifty to sixty issues just for me alone that are complaints against Warren Police Personnel. Um, so I'm gonna show you some really stupid stuff and I'm gonna just, uh, make this very short and sweet. I'm just gonna show you little tidbits of evidence and, uh, I'm ready to rock and roll on getting rid of the chief of police. And some of you may say, um, this, this seems like a personal vendetta. It is not a personal vendetta. Yes, it is, it is correct that I do not get along with certain Warren Police Personnel, but I'm the type of person that follows the evidence. I'm not a vindictive person. If the evidence shows that a police officer is crooked and didn't inappropriate stuff, engaged in criminal activity, uh, went outside the scope of the law, harassed the residents of Warren, harassed anyone in the town of Warren, which this is the case. And I have so much evidence that would sink the police department into hell, um, uh, including the cops, the chief, the management, the sergeant, the current sergeant, the past sergeant, so, um, yeah, there are lots of problems and I have lots of evidence. Uh, but the reason is I don't, I don't come to selectmen's meetings and expose my evidence, I hold on to it. And there is, uh, current, uh, pending litigation, uh, that is, has been discussed with, uh, Warren Town Council and, uh, some of the towns insured, um, to see where things stand. And, um, so this is helping to, to, so the reasoning for this is because it, it's, it's exposing that I have evidence. The claims do legally exist and they are legitimate, just the town has not officially acknowledged or had, or the town is actually also not doing anything about this. And this all points back to the Board of Selectmen, uh, because they are the ones that were presented evidence dating that I provided back from two thousand and four, uh, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, uh, to different boards and it's all been complaints against some of the same officers, including Chief Spakowski who started in two thousand and seven. So anyhow, let me just get to this, so this video is hopefully under five minutes long. So this is a funny thing, this is a little tidbit that I'm just showing you, okay? This is a video screenshot of when I went into Warren Police, uh, the date, I don't know if you can see it up here, probably not, but the date is, uh, October eighth, two thousand fifteen. And it's Burrell versus the Warren Police Dispatcher. And this, and, and people have heard throughout town that I don't like, uh, apparently don't like Warren dispatchers. This is an example of what happens with a Warren dispatcher. Uh, I won't name who this is, but it will come out at a Warren Selectmen's meeting. So I go in with my cellphone and I video the whole encounter and this is over a, uh, over the assault and battery of James Gagnon headbutting and hitting me in the face. So I go in there asking for Sergeant LaFlower, what's the status of my case? And this is what happens. That I'm treated rudely, I videoed the whole thing and I'm not, no, I'm not showing the video to the public because it's being used in the litigation process to, um, go after the police department and the dispatchers. So this is a screenshot of after she asked me my name and information, she figures it out, she calls Sergeant LaFlower on the radio. And because I'm videoing, this is the dispatcher right here, that's the back of her head, that's her two computer screens. She completely turns off all the lights in dispatch because I'm using my cellphone in the lobby videoing. She shuts off all the lights and then I just watched the video before I got the screenshot and I just screenshotted this just now. She's on the phone, instead of calling Sergeant LaFlower on the radio, she's calling dispatcher Pensinger complaining that I'm filming and then Pensinger ordered her apparently, from what I'm hearing, her talking through the little opening here, to turn off all the lights so I can't see in there. So the whole dispatch center goes dark and I, uh, I probably have at least, uh, maybe a hundred or so of these videos inside Warren Police Dispatch of inappropriate behavior. So in this case, she's turned off the light, she's actually on the phone with Lisa Pensinger right now. And she actually called the officer in the radio and said that I was, uh, that Mike Burrell was in there filming, uh, filming her and she felt uncomfortable and scared for her life, so she had to turn the lights off. So, uh, I don't know how you could be scared being filmed, I guess they're, they're, obviously if, if you're not doing anything wrong, you shouldn't shut off the lights. If you're doing something wrong, I guess you turn off the lights. But anyhow, um, so I know who this is, I'm not gonna say her name, but, um, but yeah, the, 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 the residents and citizens of Warren, you should be upset at this because this has not happened to me once. We're talking probably excess of twenty-five times where they've turned off the lights, they've put a blanket over here so I can't look in. They've said rude things to me, saying go fuck yourself and shit like that. So, um, yeah, so I've been absolutely mistreated by Warren Police Dispatchers. Um, so I'm, I'm, so let me get off that subject. So anyhow, so this is just a funny thing, I'm just including this in because, because the Warren Selectmen seem to think that I make this stuff up. So I wanna put this video in respect to Mark Richards, Mr. Richards, thank you for putting me on the agenda. Um, or in the future agenda about this. And, uh, I guess I should actually add to my complaint that I'm actually complaining about Warren Police Dispatchers. Um, now, this is from two thousand fifteen and I've actually complained to this, to the selectmen three times in writing from after October of two thousand fifteen on forward. So, so this is an action item that the Warren Selectmen have just completely ignored. But the problem was is this was, um, actually, Ga- uh, uh, I don't know if Gagnon was the chairman, Mr. Gagnon was the chairman at the time, but whatever. Uh, this was ignored, so obviously this is a complete public embarrassment that the residents of Warren should come to your Selectmen's meeting and say, hey, I saw Mike Burrell's video, what's wrong with the Warren Police Dispatchers have to hide when they don't like certain citizens? So, so this is a funny thing, yeah. So, um, so this video is actually, this is at thirteen minutes and thirty-seven seconds at this timestamp right now. So this goes on for another half hour where she completely sits there, doesn't say a word for me and Sergeant LaFlower never comes into the police station to talk to me. So she radios him to come in, but she calls him on the phone or there's a phone conversation and I just sit there, wait and wait and wait and he never shows up and I just say, what's going on? And I just end up leaving because I'm frustrated because they just gave me the shaft, meaning that they're making me wait for nothing and there was no intention of him coming in the building, so. So, yeah, so, so, yeah, I'm gonna start exposing all, maybe some of these videos that I have inside the station that show the actions of dispatcher Pensinger and her coworkers. Uh, and I have videos, I believe, from two thousand eleven to like two thousand and seventeen roughly. So, so there's a whole variety of them, this is just the stupidest one because this should be called, uh, Lights Out Dispatcher. That should be exactly what, um, Warren Police Dispatch should be known for. So anyhow, so I'm gonna go on to the next thing because I'm sure this is gonna exceed five minutes. So anyhow, here, here's what I was trying to explain during the meeting, okay? Uh, so let me go into this, uh, and I'll make this brief and this actually has to do with my complaint. So these are actually pictures, this is a picture from, uh, uh, sorry, I know I'm doing this quickly in front of the camera here to get this done. This is May seventh, two thousand seventeen at twelve fifty PM. This is the Friends of the Town Hall Open House day that they had. You can see there's an open house sign, okay? And I explained, I'm gonna show you some other funny videos of, of Officer Alexander Cinni, how crooked of a police officer he is that the town just hired and the, uh, chief of police is covering up his actions. Uh, and then plus this is what I was trying to explain to Mark last night, so you're gonna understand this. So here I am attending this thing, okay? Uh, so there's that picture. At one oh one PM, I go to my car to get my GoPro and GoPro camera out of the car and this is Detective Von Dobber parked next to my car in the whole entire parking lot. And so I go grab, so I take the picture because his car wasn't there in that other picture I just showed you, three minutes or so, minutes before that. He's parked next to my car, so let me continue on, I'm just gonna zip through this really quick. Okay, uh, again, May seventeenth, two thousand seven, one thirty-seven PM. Uh, I'm now inside the Friends of the Town Hall Open House. There's actually Mark Richard right there, so Mark Richard's actually a witness to all this, but he doesn't come forward and say that at a Selectmen's meeting that he actually witnessed what I'm about to explain. Uh, but I, but this is why I'm refreshing Mark's memory because he wants me to present evidence, uh, to the board and this, uh, video could be included. But anyhow, moving forward, oh, look what we have now. So what ended up happening is I'm tipped off by a wonderful, uh, wom- uh, woman resident from Warren who then says, oh, Detective Von Dobber was here discussing with the Friends of the Town Hall and specifically told them that Detective Von Dobber sent Officer Cinni, who, who was brand new, part-time at that time, over to spy and watch me. So here, so I actually have hundreds of pictures that I took this day. And here is a picture and you can see how I wrote Officer Alexander Cinni at the top of the second stairs. Actually is I'm going up the stairs, he went up the stairwell on the other side and he's already there watching me inside the building because Von Dobber is having him, so Von Dobber actually sent him over on taxpayer funds to actually harass me and watch me what I was doing and what I'm taking pictures of. So, so this is where it gets more interesting, okay? So here's another picture on the second floor of the town hall. There's Alexander Cinni at the door, so heaven forbid, I'm inside here, stuck inside here and he's watching my every move. And this is now at one forty PM on May seventh, two thousand seventeen. Here's Officer Alexander Cinni again, right there in the same spot, hasn't moved, one forty-six PM. Uh, here's one forty-six PM again, a close-up of him and that's definitely him. So the chief knew about this, Detective Von Dobber sent him over personally admitted to the Friends of the Town Hall staff and several friends of mine from the town of Warren that he was there to harass and watch me, no other reason. He's not keeping the peace, he's not making sure that nobody steals anything from the second floor. Uh, he's there to harass. So what do I think of Officer Alexander Cinni? You're a stupid idiot because you took orders, which is not inside the protocol of Warren Police Procedures to harass citizens to, to watch them and that's exactly what he did. So he took orders from Von Dobber and just did what he was told and thought it would be funny to harass me. Well, it's about to backfire on both, um, Von Dobber and Alexander Cinni and it's coming right now. So, oh, so as I'm leaving, as I'm leaving on Southbridge Road, what, what Warren Police don't know, and you're welcome, Mark, for this video and what I'm about to share, is I have a police scanner. The police scanner actually showed that Von Dobber. The police scanner actually showed that Von Dobber, uh, radioed, and I recorded that audio transmission, because the Warren Police didn't know that my scanner, I had purposely connected an audio recording device to my scanner, which recorded the police radio. Von Dobber radios, as in driving by the car wash on the lower end of Southbridge Road, that he says, "He's coming up Southbridge Road now, you should see him in a little bit." So thank you Von Dobber for being that stupid to say that on the radio, so I realize that's me, so I make sure I drive under the speed limit, and then of course, I get to the top of Southbridge Road near Bragg Road, and then there's a cruiser waiting and puts the lights on before I even pass, and pulls me over for speeding. So here is the actual speeding ticket. Um, this issue is, is, is actually over with, and I went to court on this, and that's what I'm gonna show in a minute, I'm not sure if this is blurry or not, but anyhow. So it basically shows 5/7/17, the time, which is now, uh, da-da-da-da, sorry. Uh, 5/7/17, date of the offense, uh, Southbridge Road near Bragg, and it's 4:30 PM, which is the true time, when, because the Town Hall ended at 3:00, and I was talking to somebody else out front, and it was true, I left at 4:15 from down bottom, and at 4:30, he writes the ticket. So here's the funny part, is Von Dob- is, uh, sorry. Officer Alexander Sinney, you're a wonderful, exciting, new Warren Police Officer, that, um, that I tried, with the Selectmen, to, by raising my hand back several meetings ago, uh, the end of last year in 2017, and I was trying to warn the Warren Selectmen, "You should not hire this guy full-time, because he falsified police records." Well, here's, I'm about to tell you that he falsified police records, and now I'm, and now the Warren Selectmen should be saying, "Oh, well, maybe we should've listened to you the first time." So anyhow, he writes me a speeding ticket for speeding, saying I was going 45 in a 35, which is 10 over the speed limit. He checks that it's posted, and it's radar-inestimated, and a $105 fine. Uh, and it says, right here, uh, if we can see it, Alexander Sinney is the signature on the ticket. So, here, so as I said, I'm just gonna, I'm trying, and I'm doing this really fast, because I just wanna, I don't want this video to be long. So here's what, um, here's what I tried to explain to Chairman Richard last night, at last night's meeting, that he did not want to hear, and no disrespect, Mr. Richard, I'm just trying, I'm, I'm now providing the opportunity to answer your questions, and explain the evidence that you say, "Well, you gotta give us the evidence." Well, here is the evidence that I was trying to show you, and I, and you're gonna get more. This is just, this is just the start of it. So right here, this is a picture I took on May 12th, which is a few days later, at 5:47 PM. And this is where I got pulled over, right after the Speed Limit 40 sign, and look, this is Southbridge Road, Bragg Road is, is prior to this, this is going uphill on Southbridge Road. And look exactly, there's a telephone pole and a Speed Limit 40 sign, and even prior to this, it's Speed Limit 40. But Officer Alexander Sinney wrote on his citation that the speed limit is 45. Uh, oh, sorry, says the speed limit's 35, and I was going 45. But he pulled me over bef- before the other Speed Limit 40 sign, and right after the Speed Limit 40 sign. And there's a Speed Limit 40 sign there, on May 12th, 2017, at that time. You're gonna love this one, okay? I figured this out, and I got the records to prove it. Uh, and that's why Officer Alexander Sinney should be fired from the department, because I got them all figured out, and I also figured this out for the chief. The ch- the chief has, uh, culpability with this issue too. So, here's my check, because I appealed the Registry of Motive Vehicle Traffic Citation. Here's the endorsement on my check, okay? Right here, it says, it's endorsed by Santander Bank Registry of Motive Vehicles on 5/8, uh, sorry, uh, 5, hold on a second. 5/18/2017, at, um, 3:48 PM is when Santander Bank endorsed my check for appealing that traffic citation, okay? Now that has relevance, because the following morning, which is May 19th, 2017, a Warren resident from Southbridge Road phone called my cellphone and said, "Mr. Burrell, the police are at Bragg Road stealing that Speed Limit 40 sign." So I get in the car, and I drive to Warren, and look now what happens. After Warren Police were notified electronically that I was appealing the ticket the following morning through the Registry of Motive Vehicle System, communicating to the Warren Police System, that I appealed the ticket, and I was gonna be having a hearing for that ticket, the following morning at, so here's the picture, on May 19th, 2017, at 12:26 PM, which is the fastest I could get to where that is, and look, the Speed Limit 40 sign is missing because the police pulled it out of the ground and stole it. So right there is the hole where the sign was, and right around the hole is footprints that were fresh from one or two hours before I took this picture. So right there is a motive, on behalf of the town of Warren, taxpayers you paid for it, that they write me a false traffic citation, it's Speed Limit 40, he says it's 35. I argue and say, "Officer Sinney, the sign right there says it's Speed Limit 40." And after I appealed the ticket, and Warren Police, through the records I have, was electronically notified on May 19th, 2017, the Speed Limit 40 sign goes missing. So when I appeal the ticket, they can show, "Look, there's no Speed Limit 40 sign there." So if that doesn't show criminal motive of the police department, the Chief of Police, and Officer Alexander Sinney, to set me up with a false traffic citation, then I don't know what criminal collusion, and I don't know what being set up for a fictitious, uh, and fabricated, um, speeding citation. I mean, it's, I'm just imaginable that they would go to this extent to frame me for a $105 ticket, and Alexander Sinney hasn't even been there, I've ne- never met him in my life prior to that May 7th day. Other than that, he's stalking me in the building, because Von Dobber said so. And then he, him and Von Dobber criminally, criminally collude, because I have the audio recording of the scanner transmissions, that I come up to Southbridge Road and they write me a ticket, because I'm leaving town. So, okay, so now we're gonna get to something better. Um, so I'm gonna show you the next pictures here, so now if I click this on my computer. This is me in my car, well, what Officer Alexander, and, uh, the Chief of Police and Detective Von Dumbass didn't know, is that I have, uh, a body camera, I have cameras in my car, I also have cellphones, so I video and audio-recorded the whole friggin' traffic stop. So it turns out, here's me in the car, you can see the blue light right here flashing from the, from the Warren Police Cruiser lights. There I am, sitting, waiting patiently, looking, looking this way to my side mirror, watching for Officer Alexander Sinney to come back to the car. So also right here, you can see, uh, sorry, nah, that's right, uh, no, right here, I'm sorry. Right up here is the timestamp on the thing, 5/7/17, it's 1:34, uh, no, sorry, 3:34 PM. Oh, that's actually, I think, an hour behind, because of daylight savings or something. But anyhow, that, it, that time is, but anyhow, here's this information, okay? So you see, I'm waiting for Officer Alexander Sinney to come back to me, because I already know he's writing me a ticket, because he doesn't know the, and he, and he doesn't know right on my passenger seat is the scanner hooked to the audio recorder. So then we go on right here, here he is, coming back to the car. Here's a, I screenshotted this, so there he is with his glasses on, coming back to the car to give me the news, and I already know he's gonna write me a ticket, I've already, I've already got them all figured out, and I'm just playing them along, I'm playing the whole Warren, this whole, this whole thing is being played by me. Because I knew that every time I come to Warren, I get set up for something by Warren Police, either they harass me, they pull me over, or something, so I says, "Well, why?" So this, I have actually recordings of other incidences, I have act, act, interaction with Warren Police Officers, and they're very unpleasant, just like this one. So this is just one example, and this is what I tried to show Mark last night, that Mark didn't want me to explain to the public, so now you're gonna see it. So here he is, coming back to the car, and here he is right here, he just handed me the traffic citation and my driver's license back, and I'm explaining to him in a calm tone of voice, and you could see he's Officer Alexander Sinney, because right there it says S-I-N-N-I. Nobody else, other than Warren Police Officer Alexander Sinney, a crooked piece of crap. And I've complained, like I said, I've already complained to the Warren Selectmen two or three times about Officer Alexander Sinney, that he should've not been hired full-time, he should've been fired, and I also have evidence that he also set up other Warren residents by giving them false traffic citations. So here I am, explaining to him, asking him to say, "There's a Speed Limit 40 sign over there, it's Speed Limit 40 sign before that one," and he continues to tell me, "Oh no, I don't know how to read a sign, it's 30, it's, the speed limit's 35." And then he says, "It's Speed Limit 35, just before the 40 sign," and then after I prove him wrong, he then says, "Oh, well, that sign, uh, the, the sign before that one is actually a typographical error, it shouldn't be there." Oh, so I didn't know that, that a Speed Limit 40 sign should really say 35, but the law, but I'm, but he's only following the law of what him and Von Dobber are, are doing on their own as police officers. So, and we already know this is motivated by Detective Von Dobber, because I just explained to you what happened to me an hour before I even got to the spot, or 15 minutes before I got to here. So I'm explaining that to him, and he doesn't give a crap, and, uh, I won't explain what he says or what he doesn't say, but, um, he, uh, he, basically, a short version is, is, yeah, he, he fucked up big time, and, uh, he, in, in right now, the Chief of Police, uh, should be held accountable, and he should be held accountable, and Von Dobber should be held accountable, but Warren Police has not done a single thing to those three gentlemen, even though I presented a written complaint about the three of them about this one incident. Never mind my other, uh, you know, 40, 50 complaints that I've complained about inappropriate police behavior. This is just, um, the one example. So yes, Mark, he, yes, Mark, I've already complained to you already about Officer Sinney. Uh, I have talked privately to, um, uh, the other Selectmen about this, but nobody has seen this evidence, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put this evidence all over the, for the world to see. So I'm just showing you little tidbits, and then, yes, when I come to your meeting, I will give you the full amount of evidence, including all the documents, all the video footage and everything, and that should give you more than enough evidence to fire the, uh, crooked Warren Police Officers, including the crooked Chief of Police, uh, including, including the crooked, uh, current Police Detective Von Dobber, that's trying to weasel his way out right now and say that he's injured on duty, magically injured on duty. Uh, and he's conveniently looking to, uh, apparently retire in the next, uh, few days, and, uh, claim retirement and just disappear from the town, anyhow. Uh, so I'm just gonna take one, one more minute and go through this quickly, and then I will stop the video, I'm sure it's already, uh, longer than I really wanted it to be. Okay, this is a, uh, court transcript right here, uh, for the Board of Selectmen, uh, that I was trying to read last night again. And right here, it says that Mr. Gagner's own testimony in court, because he went there as the Warren Board of Selectmen, he did not go there according to court records, because he claimed he was a representative of the town of Warren Board of Selectmen, uh, which I've complained to the Selectmen that he, that when he, uh, claimed the harassment prevention order me, saying that I was harassing him at Selectmen's meetings, um, and I won that case, he lied to the Chief of Police, who said that Gagner won the case, I won the case, and, and, and the claim was dismissed. But his own admission right here, uh, Mr. Richards, just so you understand, and the, you know, the two Selectmen there, and the previous Selectman before that, is Gagner admitted right here that he charged me at 20 feet and headbutted me in the face, which is assault and battery. And that's why I ended up, and I ended up finding out at court, through, thanks to Mr. Gagner, who screwed up, provided me the Warren Police Report, from that Sergeant LaFlower handled the investigation, who was on my video several times, saying he will not handle the investigation of the assault and battery of Gagner to me, because it's an ethical conflict of interest, in his own words in my video. And I had no idea that he had conducted the investigation and tossed it out, protecting Gagner from being criminally charged with the assault and battery. So Gagner's own admission right there is, uh, and I, and I told the Warren Selectmen, saying, and I've complained about Gagner saying, that the Selectmen should allow me to file a complaint against former Selectman Gagner for the headbutt, because it was a town problem, and that Town Council should rectify that. And the Selectmen have not done that yet, so I'm sure that Mark Richard will address that as well, now that I have that piece of proof, that he admitted that he was a representative of the Board of Selectmen, and that he actually headbutted me as capacity as, um, a Warren Selectman. And then he admitted, in the court case, that he was there on behalf of the Warren Board of Selectmen, and not as Jim Gagner as an individual. So, yeah, so that transcript dates from, uh, November of 2015, and that has not been shown to the public, because that is gonna be used in litigation, um, against the town of Warren. Here is the next piece of paper, this is a Mass State Police Report from Sturbridge that was, uh, faxed to Uxbridge Police with a description of me in here. And this is a problem, Mark, because this log entry, uh, was falsified by the state police, uh, official, who's an actual state police officer. And, oh, look in the last line, Mark. He says that he communicated with Sergeant La, excuse me, Sergeant LaFlower from Warren Police. Now, um, so it turns out, I have the other records. So what I found out in Sergeant LaFlower's then-2015 Police Report is that he phone-called the state police and ordered the state police what to write in the report, that it would, um, that it would change the state police's opinion that they should not pursue my complaint to the Mass State Police, that a Warren Selectman while on duty, headbutted and assaulted me in the face in September of 2015, and that I asked the state police to take a unbiased police report. Well, they refused to take any report, and I was in and out in three minutes, and I have the phone logs, I even have it on video, uh, and, and audio-recorded. And Sergeant LaFlower interfered with the state police records and put fa- and had, and had them put false things in there, and his own Warren Police records, Chief Spakowski says, that he told the state police what to say, and that, um, the state police disregarded my complaint, and Jim Gagner got away so far, but not for long, with that assault and battery of headbutting me in the face at the Warren Senior Center in, in September of 2015. Okay, next thing, moving right along. Here is a, uh, here is a records request, okay? That I got on July 16th, 2018, uh, Warren Board of Selectmen and Mark. Uh, and I'm not being rude to Mark, I'm just providing Mark the evidence that he keeps, that he publicly asked me to show him, so you're gonna publicly get it, okay? So I have records from the, uh, Board of Selectmen that, uh, came from, uh, about the Lois Fijil gravel pit, uh, that, uh, had to do with the Warren Police shooting range contaminating soil there, okay? Everybody, including, uh, town officials, have denied that they, they won't, they won't answer my question that it is a Warren Police shooting range, but we already have that evidence. So, so what I'm about to show you is, is the pictures, when I, when I filed a complaint, that Warren Police Officers, including the Chief of Police, are shooting, ha- there's no permit, there's no town permit, there's no nothing, and they are shooting in, in this, in the Lois Fijil gravel pit contaminating the dirt. And it turns out, it is actually in the Watershed Protection District, which is a federal and state, uh, protected water protection district, for no contaminants of anything within a certain mile radius. The gravel pit is in that Watershed Protection District. And shoot, having a shooting range of shell casings and lead into the sand, uh, uh, has allegedly now contaminated that property. So, everybody has said, the chief, the, the police department has not answered any records request, and, uh, the Board of Selectmen has not lifted a finger to do anything about this, even though, as I said on public camera last night, that Mark Richard was given all the photographs and the evidence a year ago, and has not done anything. But I am giving Mark, Mr. Richard, Chairman Richard, an opportunity that I will add this to my agenda item, to request the Chief of Police be disciplined and fired, as well as the police officers, because they are the suspects of contaminating the soil. So, nobody says, "Oh, it's not contaminated." Well, here's the town of Warren, pictures right here. We have, there were junk cars in there that were shot at. Here's, here's a picture of the oil leaking into the ground and contaminating the ground soil. And remember, I just said it's a water, a federal and state protected Watershed Protection District, that there shouldn't be any, any type of contamination other than dirt in there. And remember, I just said it's a water, a federal and state protected Watershed Protected District, that there shouldn't be any, any type of contamination other than dirt in there. And we already have contamination of the ground. Uh, here's a barrel, uh, no, I don't think that's related to contamination. Another barrel, uh, and then there's some more pictures of some junk stuff in there. So at that point in time, it's confirmed, it's a official, official Warren Police Shooting Range. And the police officers shooting in there are knowing that they're contaminating the soil within a federal and state protected district. So the water, uh, the water pump, the well pumping for public water supply is West Warren Water District. And I addressed this to them and they, uh, uh, I won't get into that, but, um, it turns out they were informed that the, uh, contamination of that soil of the property next to their well pumping station has contaminated dirt. Okay, moving along, I only got a few more things. This is a court transcript from October nineteen, two thousand seventeen. Of Warren Police versus Michael Barrell, defendant of the, uh, traffic citation. That I just explained to you that Officer Alexander Sinney falsified knowingly falsified in advance with Detective Von Daber and the Chief of Police knowingly falsified a traffic citation by falsifying the speed limit by saying it was thirty-five. When all the signs, the two signs before and after say forty, and I have all those videos and, and everything else. But what, what, what the Board of Selectmen doesn't know is in this transcript, my attorney who cost me several thousand dollars just to appeal a hundred and five dollar traffic citation. Cross-examined the Warren Police Officer who I just found out today, um, is apparently leaving the department for some apparent reason. He testified that Von Daber and him actually falsified that traffic citation. And he acknowledged the speed limit where I was pulled over, uh, before and at that location, the speed limit was forty, four, zero. So when my lawyer asked, well, why would Officer Alexander Sinney write thirty-five? Well, he only wrote thirty-five because he falsified a Warren Police Public Record saying that the speed limit was thirty-five. When he knowingly knew it was forty. And he says on that citation that I was actually going forty-five in a thirty-five. But it turns out I testified under oath in this document that I was actually going thirty-eight miles an hour. And that's on my cameras. And it turns out going thirty-eight miles an hour is actually two miles an hour under the legal posted speed limit of forty. Which means I was not speeding because I was too under the speed limit. So there's your evidence on one scenario, or two scenarios of harassment of Alexander Sinney ordered by Von Daber to me. And Von Daber ordering Sinney to participate in a second incident of fabricating and falsifying a Warren Police Record of fabricating a false traffic citation. Just to stick it up my ass. And, um, so my only comment is Von Dumbass and Alexander piece of shit Sinney, you should both be fired. And you should both be civilly sued as a class action by the citizens of Warren and taxpayers of Warren. And you should be ordered to pay all of us back paying taxes out of your pocket. Because not only have you victimized me, both of you victimized me, you've also hurt the actual residents of Warren. You've also hurt taxpayers of Warren. And you've probably, uh, I would estimate probably one to two hundred, uh, citizens in Warren have been harassed by you two people, if not more. So Alexander Sinney should not have a job. And he should have realized that when you're asked to do something outside the scope of Warren Police work, you should say no and saying, no, I don't feel comfortable doing that because I knew I want a job here and I'm not gonna falsify a traffic citation because Von Dumbass said to do it. So let Alexander Sinney's defense in front of the selectmen say, well, I only did it because he ordered me to do it. Okay, so you should go rob a bank, Alexander Sinney, and then say Von Daber told me to rob the bank and steal the money. Because that's exactly what you're doing. You're stealing from the citizens and taxpayers and residents of Warren. Okay, moving on. Here is the transcript of James Gagner versus Michael Barrell. For the, uh, this is the harassment prevention order that Gagner filed on me. With the Chief of Police going to East Brookfield Court with him to help to make sure I get prosecuted. Uh, with the harassment prevention order, but the chief was not there. Uh, Sergeant LaFla, uh, sorry, uh, Joey LaFlower Jr., the, your canine officer, was there and put in the time sheet for four hours. So he could actually text in the courtrooms, uh, next to me. He was texting the Police Department and officers of what was going live and Gagner lost. And here's the transcript of the whole thing where Gagner lied under oath and testified that he was acting on behalf of the Warren Selectmen. Which was not a true statement because the harassment prevention order is not a, uh, it's a individual private order from one individual to another and cannot be a wa, town of Warren Board of Selectmen matter versus a, um, versus an, an individual. So in other words, it can't be, um, it, it has to be personal to personal. But Gagner dragged the town Board of Selectmen and, and the town insurance company shouldn't be liable for his statements that he said under oath because he admitted that he was representing the town of Warren Board of Selectmen. So that makes town councilable culpable for those actions. And that makes my other town's insurance company culpable for his actions of what he said. Um, okay, the next thing, two more things. Uh, this is the Police Report that I received from the Board of Selectmen. Uh, just recently this year, like a, a couple of months ago. This is a, uh, Police Accident Report, okay? That, um, when H William, Harold William Ramsey from thirteen forty-one Coy Hill Road decided to go to the Warren Post Office and specifically decided to, uh, park his personal truck at a certain angle to my car that was parked near the laundromat. And he left, he, he knowingly, according to my evidence, left his car in drive with the engine running on, uh, this is November nine, two thousand seventeen. So again, this is evidence for the Warren Board of Selectmen, Chairman Mr. Richard. You want this evidence? Now you have just little, these are just little tidbits. There, there could be a lot of other stuff coming, but I'm just making this simple. Okay, so Harold William Ramsey and, okay, and I guess I will say this publicly because I find it very funny. Is Chief Spakowski got me these records and personally handed them to Rebecca Rosera. But what Chief Spakowski, um, apparently forgot to do was he provided these records in this, this, uh, Warren Police Log. Incident by dispatcher Pensinger Go Figure. Um, because it says call taker Lisa Pensinger. And she, and she actually has, uh, a lot of issues with me and I have a lot of issues with her, with her falsifying, uh, Warren Police Records on me. Is Chief Spakowski did not redact anything. So we have Harold William Ramsey at thirteen forty-one Coy Hill Road. Social Security Number zero five five three eight nine three five one with a date of birth of, uh, May sixth nineteen fifty. Uh, white male, driver's license number is S's in Sierra, nine three zero nine five six seven four. So apparently Chief Spakowski was so pissed off getting me those records that he failed to redact, uh, Mr. Ramsey's social security number or driver's license number and date of birth. So, um, so where, where, where I'm going with this is here is the, here is the Police Report that Warren Police took, okay? Now I explained to you sort of what just happened, but it turns out here's Mr. Ramsey here, Plymouth Rock Insurance. Uh, Harold William Ramsey again, a two thousand and seventeen Toyota, I think it was Toyota Tundra Pickup Truck. Again, uh, driver's license number S nine three zero nine five six seven four, date of birth, uh, May sixth nineteen fifty. White male, registration license plate is, uh, Mass PC five Victor Lima one six three. Uh, ax, this is, uh, Warren Police Report Accident Number one seven dash six six A C. And then my information, um, in front of the Warren Post Office. So here's what happened, folks. Everybody keeps asking me whatever happened. I've only told, only when I see people. So these are the pictures that, uh, brand new Sergeant Mallett took, okay? Mr. Ramsey intent, no, as far as I know, intentionally left his car riding it in drive with dogs in it. Nothing wrong with the dogs in it, but it turns out he parked it in a specific spot that if it rolled, it would smash into my car as a T-bone incident. And he only parked there. He couldn't park in any of the spaces. He had to park at a perpendicular, if I got that correct, angle to my car. So when it rolls, it goes boom, right into my car. So it turns out his car caused damage to his, uh, passenger front end. Smashed into my car, denting my car and damaging it. Pushed my car two to three feet sideways because it was rolling at a speed fast enough that it, that it propelled it sideways towards the laundromats, almost sliding it into the building. And then I sustained damage in the scrape, okay? So why is this, why am I explaining this report? Because I testified to Sergeant Mallett that Bill Ramsey in front of us, that we, uh, that we, um, documented the, the scene, okay? That he admitted that he left it in drive and never put it in park. None of that is in the Police Report and none of my statements, there's not one statement in there that I told Sergeant Mallett that I said this was an intentional act. And then when his car smashed into mine, his response was, well, you shouldn't have filed the fucking, um, you shouldn't have filed the fucking open meeting law complaint against me. You get what you deserve, you bastard. And that's exactly what he said in front of witnesses. I even gave the witness names to Sergeant Mallett, which none of those names appear in this report. And the report says Bill Ramsey went into the post office and the dogs who were jumping around in the passenger in front seat accidentally kicked the pickup truck from park into drive and then it rolled forward. But the problem is, is with a Toyota two thousand seventeen truck, Toyota engineers say you can't do that because you have to step on the brake. First depressing it several inches and then shift it from park to reverse to neutral to drive. So how does it, how does one dog push the pedal down to, and then the other dog shifts it from park into drive? If it shifted out of park like he's, like the Police Statement says, then it would have gone into reverse and it would have rolled the opposite direction towards the river. Instead it rolled, uh, sixty feet uphill on an incline, crested the uphill and then rolled and smashed into the side of my car. And when I confronted saying him, your car hit my car, it took him five minutes to come out of the post office like he didn't give a crap. So this is nothing personal with Mr. Ramsey, but I'm just providing the facts that I videoed, audio recorded and filmed and took pictures. And this proves that we went to Warren Police and said, we believe this is an intentional act. He intentionally left it in drive and then that's his response was, as a town official, as the chairman of the planning board, he says, you shouldn't have filed the fucking, um, you shouldn't have filed the open meeting law complaint against me. You get what you deserve. Well, that made it personal and that he made it that he did it on behalf of the town. So there's your answer to that, uh, Board of Selectmen. And I complained that, about that, and nobody from the town nor the Police Department has ever edited the Police Report. Answered my question where my, why my statements and evidence is missing. And they, oh, and they actually sent it to Mr. Ramsey's insurance company so he would get his car fixed. And they said, oh, it was all an accident. The dogs did it. So in other words, the Police Report is tailored, tailored to what Mr. Ramsey needed to, uh, not be charged. And that's the other thing is he should be charged with negligent, negligent operation of a motor vehicle like you or I would if we did that. And, and, and our car rolled into somebody else's. Uh, all right, and the last thing is right here. This is a public records request from the Worcester County District Attorney's Office of Joe Early. Courthouse two twenty-five Main Street, Worcester. I received this on September thirty, two thousand sixteen. It's addressed to me, Michael Barrell, P O Box five four two, Warren, Mass. And you can see it's got lots of papers in it. Okay, uh, Warren Board of Selectmen, this is evidence that we got from the Worcester County District Attorney's Office of complaints. Complaints of Warren Police Corruption, of Chief Spakowski Corruption Complaints to the State Police and the Worcester County District Attorney's Office. So you're gonna tell me, Joe Early asswipe, that your office has all this? And you have the balls to send me correspondence as well as Ms. Mary Belrose and also to Brian Corvo? Uh, which says that they, that, that was sent, that they received several complaints, including other private complaints of inappropriate police activity in the town of Warren against the Chief of Police, Chief Spakowski. And its officers, including Von Daber, Mark Chase, uh, Joe LaFlower, Sergeant LaFlower, the list goes on. And you send me this and you still say, oh, we're sorry, we didn't find anything? Well, I don't know what to say to that, but I guess the criminal collusion, which I have provided evidence on, actually extends to District Attorney Joe Early's office and him personally for covering up the crimes. The crimes dating back to two thousand and six that I have evidence of. That Warren Police just did what they want, when they want, and got away with anything they want of harassing the citizens. So the Chairman of Board of Selectmen, including Mr. Chairman Richard. If this, these, these are just five or six things I'm mentioning, including this video behind me. I don't know what more, what more evidence, other than I could present you a hundred and fifty things and I could bring you sixty people from the town of Warren that have lived there forever, that are in the same boat that I am. This, as I said to everybody, this is not a personal attack on anybody. This is just a simple video of the evidence that I just explained. And just because I shown you three pictures of Sinney doesn't mean that there's three pictures. There's actually more, but I'm not gonna spend time showing you seven hours in all my cards. And that is why I'm trying through the Board of Selectmen, through Chairman Richard, through Vice Chair, Mr. Dari Onardi. And Clerk, Mr. John Nason. I'm trying to explain to you guys and to the, I don't care who you are in Warren. I don't care if you don't like me or you do like me. If you're a resident, a citizen, a taxpayer, anybody in Warren should be watching this video. Tell your friends about it, pass it around. And if you have a Warren Police problem that you're afraid to bring forward or discuss or complain about saying, if I complain about this police officer, he's gonna vandalize my car. I've had eggs thrown at my house. I've heard it all and it should not be happening. And that is why I actually ran for Selectmen in two thousand and fifteen in Warren was to solve and stop these problems. But because I'm not there in charge, I can't fix it. The only way I can fix it is by what I'm doing now. And the, is as you know, one person complains, it goes nowhere. Three people complain, yeah, okay, yeah, maybe we'll listen. Five people complain, oh boy, we have a problem. Ten, fifteen, twenty people complain, you're gonna be well heard. So we need to get together in numbers and put together a campaign to get rid of Chief Spakowski and the crooked piece of shit police officers that they are. And I don't say that to be a jerk. I don't say that to be mean. I was a former police officer and this has nothing to do with that. If I was a police officer and did something inappropriate, I could be sued. I could be disciplined. I was warned what it was. So when I was a police officer, if I don't, I didn't engage in anything outside of the box. This is outside of the box. It's not in, and I actually have copies of the Warren Police, uh, procedures and stuff that I got back several years ago. Is not in their job description to falsify traffic citations and harass citizens and follow them around on taxpayer money. So with this, I'm going to close the video. I'm sure it's probably a lot longer than I thought. But anyhow, uh, thank you for watching and, and as you now know, this is actually a lot longer unfortunately. But at least I added some little tidbits and now you see exactly that when I speak to the Warren Selectmen, I'm always telling the truth. And that I was correct to Mr. Richard, that I have complained for several years and it's gone on deaf ears and nobody wants to do nothing. So now is the time, uh, Warren Board of Selectmen, to make this happen. Let's have a, put me on the agenda and let's have a disciplinary hearing against the chief. Against the chief, starting with the chief first. Because there's no way he's not aware of this. These records come from the Warren Police Department and the Chief of Police, so he knows what's going on. And I feel bad for him. I really do. Even though I hate him, I hate his guts, but it's, you know, and I don't mean to make, say that to make it personal, but. All he'd have to do is just apologize to me and say, look, you know, we just need to go on forward. How can we get along? And if he just stopped harassing, but I've been harassed since two thousand and four and I have those records all the way to two thousand and four. So we're talking. You know, we're, we're talking ten, fifteen years that I have evidence, but I'm only looking to use. Anywhere between the, the last maybe five years to ten years going backwards from today. Uh, but, or, or maybe I just need to just focus on the newest stuff going back five years. Um, and of course, as, as you smart people understand, um. You cannot. Um, it, oh, as you understand is, uh, during last year, I believe two thousand and seventeen. Uh, Mr. James Gagnor, who you heard some stuff about, he was the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. So you can't, so I couldn't. So all those years went by. And plus he was on the board before that since two thousand and fifteen. So I cannot file a complaint against him because there's nobody above James Gagnor unless you go to Town Council. I've already communicated to Warren Town Council and, and they, they did answer my questions and they. Said they will only handle a lawsuit. And work on a financial settlement for me and the citizens of Warren. Or, uh, they have to take a complaint. But they agreed that the Selectmen would not normally take a complaint against a fellow Selectmen because. Then the board would be investigating their own member that they sit next to and there's nobody higher other than Town Council. In the courts to file a complaint against Chairman Jim, Jim Gagnor at the time. So, so three years was wasted of my time that I could not complain about the police because. Gagnor protected the police, but Gagnor was, did receive in the board as a, as a whole, did receive. Evidence, some evidence, not as much as this. Uh, did receive complaints from me as well as other citizens and I have copies of those and they went on deaf ears and there's even complaints from two thousand and eighteen. That Mr. Richard being the chairman. Uh, some of those have gone nowhere as well. I don't understand why and I'm, uh, actively investigating that. Um, so I think, so, so again. I, I want to thank the, anyone. I don't care whether you hate me or not. This is not a. Uh, I'm not a divided person. This is about what's right for the town of Warren. And that includes citizens, taxpayers, voters, everybody. Um, so anyhow, yes, so I'm just gonna leave it there. Thank you for watching. Uh, I'm sure this is longer than it should have been, but obviously, uh, after watching, I'm sure you've gotten an education. And I ask that you, um, actually, I guess I need to request. So what I'm requesting is, is I would be interested. And my lawyer would be interested, or maybe you're just doing this personally without my lawyer, is I wanna hear from as many people. And I will make a challenge. I want. Two hundred people who have been harassed by Warren Police. Or maybe a hundred people that have been harassed by any Warren Police Officer. Whether it was a false traffic citation, a burglary, a speeding incident, drunk driving incident. Um, any, any type of issue that you feel that you were abused and harmed by Warren Police. That, um. I don't prefer to contact me because I have some lit- litigation issues in the works. That are being discussed, um, so I would, I guess, contact the Warren Board of Selectmen. And, or I guess what I'll do is. Yeah, contact the Warren Board, actually, why don't we do this? The best thing for you to do would be to come to a Warren Board of Selectmen meeting or. Or have them contact me privately. I do not prefer to give my cell phone number out. Uh, nor my email, but if you know, reach anybody in Warren that knows me, then send me correspondence. Um, but I wanna work with as many people and if I can get the two hundred people. To come forward that you've had an incident in the past five to seven years. And you're willing to come forward and complain about the police department. You should be on the agenda as well besides me and then we should be all heard as a voice. Uh, and, and, and I, unfortunately. I'm only saying this because I've had enough. Of the Warren Board of Selectmen doing absolutely nothing the past five years. I have complained, I sent certified letters and they have done absolutely nothing to discipline these people. So they've done so much more damage that to me, it should be a financial restitution. To all the voters, taxpayers. And we're owed money back for the misbehavior and criminal activity of the police while on duty. So I will end it there. Thank you for watching and that's what I would like to see. That's my challenge. If a hundred people can come forward. Or as many as two hundred people can come forward. We will then put this matter to rest and get a police officers and a Chief of Police of new people. That can actually take care of us and do their job and not make it then personal vendettas against citizens. And voters and taxpayers that they don't like.